I'm going to call the order, Kelly. Town Council Work Session for November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. We begin with Planning Commission decisions. From the first of November. Happy Election Day, by the way, everyone. Or unhappy Election Day. Anything?
No call-ups, but two quick clarifications. Let's ask, and the one with the Father Dyer addition remodel. We approved a substantial application for them. And then I think with this, I was just curious, does one? Can they do both if they decide to move forward? And how's that looking in the entirety?
Excellent question.
That is a good question, Jay. We did. You know, when they apply for the smaller one, because they're, I think, concerned about their fundraising efforts. So they were trying to do the the minimum. Where they needed to go to get better accessibility. They specifically asked us if they could retain the vesting on the previous application in case fundraising goes better than expected, and they could complete the other one. And from looking through the code, there's no, there's nothing that says you can't have two development permits vested at the same time. So we specifically wrote a condition to clarify that this is not an amendment to the previous one. This is a separate standalone. And they still have, you know, a little over two years remaining on the vesting for the larger application that was subject to that development agreement.
But they have to pick one. They can't do both.
They could, they could do, well, in theory, they could do the smaller one and then. I mean, the timing of it's a little bit weird because there's only three years vesting. So I guess they could be almost finished with that and decide like, they could expand it out and then use the other one and have separate permits. They specifically designed this one to work if they kind of got midway through construction or even fully completed to add on to it and basically do the original design. But that would be, you know, this thinking through like the timing of development, it would be a really quick turnaround. They'd almost have to probably decide midway through construction that flip the switch and do another. Some, someone may.
The other question on the gold pan exterior food and beverage. Where was the parking offset? Or did they have to offset their parking? At a courtyard?
Perfect timing.
But they did create new parking required from adding food and beverage area. They are paying a fee in lieu into the district for that area that they're creating new need for parking. But they're waiving two spaces through the deed restriction. And that waiver allows them new area to place the food and beverage on. Does that make sense? So they have existing parking. They're waiving their requirement through the deed restriction so they can put a food and beverage area. But that use requires new parking, which they are paying through the district.
Understood.
They do that. I mean, where are those people that live upstairs going to live, going to park?
It's part of a code provision that deed restrictions, deed restricted housing within the district can waive residential parking.
Did that several years ago.
Yeah. Down the South Main, we did that on building.
We did that for the one that had no parking so that they could.
People griped about it afterwards. Didn't work.
Jay asked all my questions.
He's like that. He steals questions. Anyone else? All right, call-ups? Anybody? Dick, call up? We have Justice Center ordinance for conveyance of property and site lease purchase in support of for rent workforce housing for second reading.
Yeah, this is the second reading of this ordinance, which will approve a deed and a site lease and lease purchase agreement, documents that are required as part of the C O P financing for the Justice Center project. And there have been some changes since first reading. And they are delineated in red on the ordinance in your packet. Those changes were driven by, the budget actually went up slightly from twenty million, five hundred to twenty-two million. We also opted to not bring cash to that project. Originally, the town and the county were both going to bring cash, which meant we were going to do a smaller C O P. So without the cash, the amount of the C O P goes up slightly. So those changes resulted in some slight revisions to the ordinance, which are shown in red. And we recommend approval of the ordinance as presented.
Questions? Everybody okay with that additional C O P funding? Thank you. Two thousand and twenty-three mill levy ordinance for first reading. Same as it ever was. Hey, Dave. Election Day.
Yeah.
Bringing back memories for me. In prior life. Here to submit the first reading of the two thousand and twenty-three property tax mill levy, which is a part of our budgeting process for property taxes, keeping it the same at five, five point zero seven mils, which equates to three point seven million in property taxes for the town. Any questions? So. So we get of all the property tax, we get like seven percent of, the record means you get seven percent of the property tax that people pay.
No, it's about seven percent of the money that we take in is property tax.
Yeah. We have our own property tax, that five point zero seven.
Yeah.
Okay. About seven percent of what we take in for a town, all told.
Yeah.
Between sales tax and everything, only seven percent is property tax.
Oh, I get you. Okay.
When people say they pay their property tax.
Yeah.
So they pay for all the services they get.
Yeah, okay. I knew it's seven percent. I just didn't know how it applied.
We have kept it the same for a long time.
Yeah.
Does it pay it? Everybody good with this?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Policy for mass bonus first reading. Hey. Well, hello.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're here for the first reading. We made it for the mass. Repealing the mass bonus. I'll try and be pretty brief. The draft bill is in your packets, the memo is in your packets, and all those bullets are the actual changes we made. So to just highlight on the big stuff. We're basically eliminating policy for A and for R mass. So basically, all square footage will now count as density. The big thing we wanted to mention, it looks like a lot of underlines, but basically the table, we talked about this last time, the table from for a about the neighborhood president, the maximum sizes for houses, that's going into policy three. So that's one of your big underlying parts. Otherwise, we're just kind of updating the density definition. We are making a minor edit there to not include open air structures, so parking structures, trash enclosures, that's been our precedent. That home size limitation table has been moved like I just mentioned. We removed that nine hundred square foot garage exemption. We talked about that last time. We added that exemption for the garage, five hundred square foot garage and sheds in Lincoln Park and Wellington neighborhoods, and then the exemption for historic garages, barns and sheds. Yeah. And then, oh, we removed that section about in in social community requiring the leisure and amenity areas, since that was kind of maybe being contradictory. So we're happy to take questions.
I have a couple of questions. First, under the table in three A, it talks about an additional five hundred square feet of above ground square footage is permitted for a single family or duplex structure. If such square footage is not allowed by subsection A of this section. And so first, just subsection A, all those references, I think, were are now outdated because that worked with policy four. Right?
Yeah. The reason we carried those over, those are all in for a, they were all specifically written under the home size limitation and they were supposed to go with the table. So that was one of the concessions, if you will, that was made is like, if someone was already maxed out on density according to the table and for a, they would get another five hundred square feet of density. That was just a concession that was made in the whole, you know, making of the neighborhood preservation policy. So to just be true with that policy, we took everything that was underneath that table and brought it over. There's also a section about duplexes and how two duplexes share additional, that additional five hundred square feet. So it gets kind of complicated, but that was all just stuff that was related to the home size.
Okay.
Restriction.
Thank you. That helps explain it. But I think throughout this section, and I could be wrong, but when we refer to subsection A, I don't think this table is labeled.
We can make those cut for amendments. I was checking with what you're saying, yeah.
And then one other question about our exemption from Wellington, Wellington to Lincoln Park, we call out those neighborhoods specifically. But would there be a point in making that more general? So all the restricted properties, I know there's not that many that qualify for a garage and to have a apartment or carriage house above the garage, but would there be a point in making that more general?
I think only going forward. So if, for instance, we, somebody came through with another development, that could be part of the negotiation is we can offer this also.
Okay, so say a block eleven.
Yeah, yeah. Even if whether it was something that we were doing or something a developer was doing, I think that that could be part of the discussion through the development process for that extra five hundred. I would hate to do a blanket because there's so many other. There's other pieces that we might say, oh, that was a mistake. Now they can add a garage and it doesn't really fit or so.
Yeah, that wouldn't make sense.
Okay, Harold, the reason, sorry if this is kind of redundant to what Eric just said, but the reason we call out the Wellington, Wellington two and Lincoln Park is because that master plan specifically says, go to the code for mass. And now that we're removing mass, it just wouldn't make sense. So that's why we're kind of building that into the new code, since that master plan says to go to the development code, whereas all other existing ones specify density and mass in their master plans, and that one does not. So that's kind of why we also added that for those neighborhoods.
My writing that this pretty much eliminates the ambiguity between density and mass, where it kind of combines it. When we're talking about the historic district, I know this was brought up in some of our conversations. When it comes to digging out basements, that will be mass, correct? So will that?
So that's in our historic standards is you, if you landmark, whatever's under that ground is free. But it's now just going to be considered dense. It's just density.
Okay.
So it, if they don't landmark it, that will be counted as density, which is how it is today if it's finished. So now there's no differentiation between finished and unfinished density and mass, all the complicated stuff. But if it's in the historic district, it gets landmarked, that won't count, but that's in a different area of, that's in the historic design standards.
Okay, so if an historic single family residence is purchased and they want to lift it up, dig out, create a basement that is livable, that can be finished, does that now count against their allowable?
That's free density that they get by landmark.
By land marking.
Yep.
Then they
Which before would have been counted as density too, because it's finished. I guess if they dug out and kept an unfinished basement, then it wouldn't have, in the previous code with mass, that would have counted as mass, I guess. But.
If it's less than four feet in height, then if it's, if it's not landmarked as less than four feet in height and height, and they're just kind of putting a new foundation under there, that wouldn't be counted.
Right.
Correct. And then when it says the clarification, it has clarified. You know, just, I feel like since Christie's in the audience, I have to bring this up with trash enclosures and how that plays in. When you say it was clarified, that will be counted.
We added in the definition that basically building areas that are not fully enclosed. So if they have anything that's a foot or more vertically open, so a dumpster, parking and or parking carport, thank you, that's the word. That will, and porches, they will not count, which is kind of our precedent so far is, you know, carports and things like that have not been counted as density. So we just kind of clarified in the definition of density, that if it's not fully enclosed, it doesn't count.
So if we, are we setting ourselves up or what would be the answer if someone wanted to do a garage but decided to have a foot and a half opening in between the roof line and the walls or whatever, would that not be counted as density then?
It's a good question. I think, you know, that's how the definition is, is written. But I think the precedent and the understanding is it's just kind of not a fully enclosed. You know, just like the town parking garage, we didn't count as mass density.
I think we can make a clarification if we need to by second reading.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's a terrible idea, but okay, let's.
So if you build your house like that.
You can build it as big as you want. Just bring sleeping bags.
God, this house is cold.
Will work.
Me too. I just feel like we've been there and I don't want to go back to their life. Try to move the ball forward a little bit.
Want to go back to there.
To your first point, this is actually going to really simplify things for staff. For the planning commission, for you guys, when you see these things come in front of you. So I think it's a good thing.
Yeah. I just, you know, I guess my my view or my lens on this was what are the unintended consequences? Are we to have just carports everywhere or anything like, or are we not to have restoration of in historic districts and things like that? And it sounds like you guys have a really good handle on it. So I appreciate it.
I have one question. Is there interest from the council to talk about whether market rate properties? It seems a little bit counterintuitive to me. We've really been trying to entice A D U's and make them easier to build and in these, you know, deed restricted neighborhoods. There are such good locations for A D U's. And I also think that the market rate homes in Wellington and Lincoln Park are some of the only more affordable market rate units in Breckenridge anymore. So I'm a little bit. Well, I'm very interested in talking about whether the market rate units in Wellington and Lincoln Park should, if they build, if they include a carriage house, they could get that five hundred bonus. You couldn't just get the garage and you'd have to include a carriage house. I just think like, there's a lot of reasons for us to be considering that.
A carriage house with a deed restriction.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, for sure.
I'm not an A D U. I'm open to, I'm open to do that.
Because I think, you know, those houses are going for like one point six million and that's getting, I mean, I was very surprised and and happy to read the sentence that says most of them are owned by members of the local workforce. And I think that if that's true, then that's really working and that's awesome. And I think that, you know, to continue providing that progression, I think carriage house or a heat restricted rental would be a good thing to consider.
Yeah, I agree. I was going to bring that up as well. So I'm in support of that line of thinking.
You excluded that other than.
No, Dick had just suggested at the last meeting that we provide that exclusion for the deed restricted, but then we.
Are you going to, would you like to put on it though?
Well, after the
Well, it, after the, as the same one we would as the ADU, you know.
ADUs have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, what do we, is that, do we put a lighter?
I don't know if we have, do we require restriction on carriage houses?
Because it's specifically allowed as market rate.
Yeah, but if they're going to get a, a density bonus, then I would like to have them deed restricted.
Thirty hours and.
Yeah, maybe not a light, but, uh, I mean, we're not going to do appreciation on it. So maybe a medium.
I mean, I am not ready to say yes to this, this evening. So I think we can either talk about it at second reading or in between. Because for me, it's got to be more than just 30 hour and no SDRs because you can't SDR to begin with. And the 30 hour thing, I think, is relatively easy to walk around. So 500 free square feet of density. I want to make sure we talk it through.
You can like tie it to an AMI on the rent rate or something?
Well, maybe or some, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. It's, I think that's something for Lori to come.
It's a good idea. We have, you know, a, a rent restriction on around AMI.
Okay. We'll bring the staff.
I'm with Eric. Let's get Lori to bring back recommendations for second reading. For what the deed restriction might look like.
It seems to me that these are big enough policy issues that we'll just not move it forward for publication and bring it back again with, for first reading.
This is the only one.
You don't want to have further discussion on that issue.
I mean, we're just going to talk about a deed restriction. Right? Or are we going to talk about more stuff?
Yep, just working the definition per J, which that's an easy one, just clarifying.
I know some of you really want to get this bill passed. And so I don't want to see it held up by that. You can always, I'd rather have.
Yeah, we can.
How difficult is to amend?
No, it's, it's fine if you want to do it that way, or we just bring the second policy issue separately. There's no reason we can't move this forward and then work on that as an amendment. Okay.
Do you want to add the bonus exemption for the market rate carriage houses?
Let's wait and do that as.
Okay, so we'll leave this as is for deed restricted only bonus and then we'll work on clarifying.
Good.
Carriage houses. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Eligibility of entrata property for annexation as a resolution.
Mayor, council, I think I've probably belabored annexation enough. This is really a procedural issue and, um, if you don't have any questions or let me know if you have any questions about it.
Questions?
I can't get enough to talk about annexations. I appreciate.
We can have another class. No, everybody good with this?
Council two and staff two, anything like any actions?
No, that's a really good question. Um, this is just a procedural issue to keep us on track with, uh, the publication of the hearing on the eligibility for annexation. And then if to, if we come to some agreement on the development agreement, then there will be two sep, three separate ordinances. Uh, sorry, two separate ordinances, one for a proposed development agreement and annexation of the property and the other for zoning.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, good. All right, let's move on to public projects update.
Hello. I do have one item to discuss that is not in the memo today. The delivery zones in the alleys. Staff is proposing to keep everything the same except for the time restriction in the ice house zone. We would like to lift that time restriction and allow for all day deliveries based on weather and the anticipation that trucks may have a lot of trouble getting to that delivery zone before the nine or 10 a.m. restriction currently in place.
But not allow any parking there anymore.
Keep no parking. So if there isn't a delivery vehicle staged, it can still function really well as a pedestrian walkway, but allowing more flexibility for deliveries during the day.
What, what precipitated the change? Cause I thought we were trying to do this.
I think it was, the whole plan was the summer.
Okay.
Experiment.
We had already always anticipated adjusting it for winter. Given council's approval. We can restrict the time again next summer if we wish, but everyone was under the impression that that was a little bit too restrictive in winter conditions. And it would cause a further, you know, travel for unloading if they are late, if they had to walk it all the way from Ski Hill Road. So when do they, like, is there a benefit or is there a possibility to continue a restriction when it's busiest? Or are they already never coming in the afternoon and the evening?
Oh, no, they do.
They come all day long now. And once, once I-70 closes and just, you know, once the.
They're all having warehouse, um, workforce issues and so they come all day long.
So now it's not really the time.
This last couple of months have been terrible. I mean, they have not, they're all, Shamrock moved to a new million square foot warehouse and has not enough staff to run it. So they're showing up late every day. So the whole thing's a real colossal. I'm not going to say it. You having trouble?
Yeah.
Are we comfortable with that change for winter? And then we can reexamine all of this as we look at the overall master plan with Norris this year. Do you think there's anything we should be doing with lighting in that? In that walking, I mean, because what precipitated this is that it's just dangerous. Doing anything else if we're not going to be controlling, you know, the deliveries coming at, when it's dark out.
Nearly the, the amount of traffic walking up and down the alleys in the winter time.
Okay.
That's really, it's just not the same thing as it is in the summer.
We'll observe all of it. We want to leave the rest in place, the one-way in place, so we can have a full year's worth of observation on how that's functioning with the current changes. Yeah, because I wonder if we did like nice Christmas lights, like something different that attracts people out to that walking strip out of the alley, if that would just continue to, because people are using that. You mean the new bike path spur? The bike and, yeah, people are walking or biking on it. But I just wonder if we could continue reinforcing getting people, yeah, out of there.
Talking to one on the west.
I'm talking the one along the river. Along the river. I mean, is that a high priority? We've already. No, probably not. Did for this year for the lights, we could add it for next year.
Yeah, you know, it just keeps going back to, we need to do some planning on this. We, we need to do a work session and get us on the same page so that we can, you know, speak to a consultant to help us do some planning.
And then can we move, we can move forward with implementing more improvements once we get a plan. Okay, so we'll, we'll lift the time restriction. We'll get that implemented as soon as we can get the stickers printed. So probably about a week or so. And we'll get Breck Park to put out some messaging to the drivers. That was my only addition. I can take questions on projects if anyone has questions.
Questions?
So, uh, point out to the council and, uh, Eric brought up the question when we were meeting with him today. You'll notice that there's a double yellow down there, uh, on highway nine where people are coming down through the roundabout southbound. All right, you're southbound through the roundabout and you typically make that left turn into First Bank or the back of Town Hall. That's an illegal left turn now.
Oh.
So, uh, C dot never liked that. They wanted to actually, when we added the right in, right out um, and the roundabout, they wanted to eliminate that. And in order for us to keep that curb cut, Shannon reminded us, we had forgotten that, that, uh, that it could only be a right in, right out.
But we're not busting people, right? Can we just turn a blind eye?
I mean, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and tell everybody, just ignore it. And, but there will be people that make left turns. I probably did it, not even thinking about it, right? It will happen, but it's, you're not supposed to make a left turn.
And there's an additional no left turn sign that was installed, I think, today even to reinforce it.
Oh, look at me. I just asked a question. I was expecting a different answer, actually. I just thought we'd get rid of the, the double yellow.
Yeah, I want to take down the sign.
Kramer did and just go out with a little paint roller.
Yeah.
And fix it.
Back here's.
Up the highway. Right?
It's fantastic. The, uh, roundabout, the, you know, the facing on the, uh, Coin Valley Bridge looks great. Um, yeah.
Bridge rail should be going up tomorrow on the Coin Valley Road. So the, the barriers are gone.
Not on a beat a dead horse.
How do you get into?
How do you get into First Bank?
Ski Hill Road access.
Through the, like the Town Hall parking lot and that.
You got to be more careful now walking through Town Hall parking lots, people's speed.
As to plan to take a right into there. Right-hand turns are always better than lefts, Jeffrey.
But then you have to do a U-turn somewhere, uh, whatever. So, yeah, you didn't make the decision. So.
No, C dot was going to eliminate the access and we backed and at least got to retain it.
Yeah. Doesn't sound like we have much choice in the matter.
You know how First Bank's got that, they have a one-way in, they have a no entry.
Yeah.
Are they going to change that? Because then.
Yeah, that's not enforceable. That's.
Well, I know it's not enforceable, but that just adds more confusion.
They're going to be totally landlocked.
Can get interactive bank.
We did share with them the access easement that exists for First Bank and they said that is not relevant to the on highway nine and they brought it to the attorney general's office. So it's been thoroughly vetted by C dot.
They're not doing the buffet on Saturdays anymore.
That's because of this.
Yeah.
You blame this.
Advantage of it. On projects that I can answer?
Damn.
Thank you.
Good job, Shannon.
Thanks, Shannon. All right, mobility. The world traveler.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, just a couple of quick, uh, mobility updates. Um, we'll start off with the not so positive one. Uh, we're a little concerned on transit staffing right now. We've kind of taken a step backwards. Um, we are still looking now for 11, uh, drivers. We were at six that we needed, uh, about a month ago. We've lost a few of those people. So um, a little bit of concerning there. Uh, but the team is working on kind of a contingency plan. Our, our goal is to switch to the winter routes on December eighth. And right now we have a pretty good plan that we can do with 30 drivers and we have 28 right now. So um, the plan would allow for the trolley, which is good for most of us, um, and 30 minute service, uh, for all of our routes with the gray route getting 15 minute service. So still a pretty good offering. Uh, we wouldn't eliminate anything and we would add the trolley back. So, um, I guess silver lining in there somewhere, uh, but we're still working hard on hiring. So that's that. Uh, this Friday, the blue route will be back with the ski resort. So, uh, serving French Street there. So that should be great. Provide that service and the Upper Warriors Mark Shuttle is going to begin, uh, the day before Thanksgiving, November 23rd, I believe. Uh, we'll start running that again. So that should be great for that, uh, neighborhood. And last but not least, uh, the South Gondola lot will be free until Friday of this week. And then on Friday, we go to pay parking. So um, in that lot, other than that, that's all I have.
If you had to put like one reason why staffing is such an issue, I mean, I know it's across the board an issue. Is it housing?
Uh, I don't think so. Um, I think there's, it, what's happening to us is, is people are, you know, being hired and then they're just not showing up. So we're thinking they're getting a better offer somewhere else and they don't tell us why or, you know, why they're not showing up.
Existing drivers that are quitting, are they leaving for other local jobs or are they leaving the area?
Lost one, uh, driver currently, um, and they did go to the, a competitor, I guess we could say.
They went to a hotel with a shuttle. Right?
Stage was the one.
And we lost one to.
The stage, yeah. Summit stage.
Well, we, didn't we lose a supervisor?
We lost a supervisor to a local lodging shuttle and then one driver to the summit stage.
One was a good loss. Is it? The, in the, the fact that we have to drug test, that's a federal thing.
It's, yep, yeah. Every CDL has drug testing the same. So we're not unique in that.
Yeah.
Funny, I had the paper here and it's opened up to some stages add for $5,000 bonus after six months.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, we are pretty good at, um, recruiting from outside the county, whereas the stage is very focused on internal. So, you know, they, they're kind of trying to share the same pool that we already have. So.
Other questions for Matt? On this?
Sorry, Matt.
Uh, okay. Keep it up.
The, uh, trolley going.
We're excited to get that back out there. So.
Thanks.
Um, and are we going to do, do we, have we decided we're doing the shift on the purple? A to B?
Uh, we're open for feedback on that. So.
That's something you guys want to see? We're only running one purple. Do you want to see a shift like we've done before?
What's the current plan?
So our preference would be to run the purple A all day and all night, but, um, we're open to the needs of the community. So.
Well, how has the A, A B switch been working for the summer, et cetera?
It works fine for us, but we think that we see more ridership going on the A direction. So.
I think you should do what you think is best and keep track of the numbers. And if it's not better, then we can always talk about it again.
Sounds good.
Other questions? Okay. Well, are you going to do sustainability?
If you have any questions in, uh, what's in the packet?
Sustainability, sustainability plan update. Any questions for Matt?
I did have an HLA asked about the shared enclosures and when we're going to start rolling out information on that deadlines, potential opportunities for funding.
We're getting very close. I think, uh, I think there might be a note in there or I have a note here that, uh, next week, we're going to begin kind of rolling out a website and a lot of information. So, um, I think it's within the next 10 days. Maybe it's the November 18th, I think is the date. So very soon.
Great, thank you.
Um, I was interested to see this, that HC3 has the contract for the, um, marketing for pay as you throw. I just, are they a marketing firm or, I mean, I'm just wondering why that is the case. And I, I want to make sure, because I think that it's a big, I don't think that pay as you throw is necessarily, um, I think it has a lot of support out there. But if the communication isn't terrific and people aren't just absolutely inundated with um, information, I'm very concerned about that program. And so I want to make sure the right people are in charge. And, you know, HC3 is great. I just want to make sure they're the right firm for that.
I agree with that. Yeah.
Question. I will bring that back and we'll, we'll get some further clarification.
Yeah, education's given me a huge part of success of that.
Even if, you know, they're pairing with someone, I just want to make sure they have the right skills. It's the right package for that.
Right. I'll, uh, I'll follow up with Jesse and team on that.
Great.
Other questions? Well, all right, Matt, thank you. Housing childcare?
We got a lot of stuff we'll be getting into between.
Yeah.
Stillson and the budget. So.
Uh, committee reports.
There's one small report in there.
Report.
One small report. Police.
Is he taking his own notes? Is that why? Events committee.
Um, the memo is in the packet. I added some information about the changes to the Santa race. And other than that, uh, I can answer any questions or Kelly can answer questions.
What's the changes to the Santa race?
Naked.
Let's not tell Jeffrey that. Um, the Santa race is going to start down near Watson and go up. Um, main, go south on Main Street to Adams and it's going to loop around, come out Jefferson and come back. And that's an attempt to spread out the crowd because we have seen last year and, and as it's sort of evolved, that we have a lot of people watching and we have a lot of participants.
I think that's a kind of a hill climb, right? And there's some elevation game.
I.
I don't know.
Your age.
No, I, I could do. I just don't want to kill Santa. So.
The, there won't be a procession with red, white and blue just for safety reasons.
Cool.
Other questions? All right, thank you. All right, human resources staffing analytics.
All right, so in your packet was some information that I put together for Q3, but as you heard from Matt, things change as quickly as I put them together, so. Just wanted to say that we did have, our voluntary turnover was down to 3.9% or vacancy rate was down and you could see some of the other data. Our applicant volume is starting to trend upward and if you have any questions about the information I put in there for Q3, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions to start?
I kind of want to tee this up a little bit for Dana on there. I think that we're at a, we're at a point, you know, we've been talking for months now about our pay study. You all have been patiently waiting and asking about the pay study every time we look at our. Our analytics like this and we discuss the issues going on. We, you know, we know that there are areas and we've known going into this that there are areas that we've fallen behind. Certainly, some of those are, are some of our harder-to-fill positions and just some positions in general where we've fallen behind. And the, I could tell you the challenge with the pay study this year is we all started this off with the right intentions, but it has been such. A crazy year and maybe even more than a year, right? We've been dealing with this stuff and, I mean, we can do something and. And Dana will, you know, look through the data, send it back for some revisions and when we get it back, it's already outdated. Or something else in the market has changed. To throw a wrench into this. But as we, as we have been analyzing the data to point and looking at it, we have identified these areas that we know are lagging behind. And I think we're at a point where we need to just pull the trigger on a recommendation. And move forward with this and, you know, still use the study to help adjust our range categories. For our different grades that we have, a number of different grades depending on the type of position that you're in and how, how are those grades? You know, starting, ending ranges, adjusting and we can do that, but when it comes to the, the compensation for those current positions we have. You know, I think we're at a point where, you know, we have a recommendation that we want to make and I want them to just kind of teed it up, Dana, and let you.
So, thank you, and I think, you know, what Matt said about transit teed it up nicely and what Rick just said. In typical pay study years, you submit your data and then you can, you can solidly go off of that data and plan pay adjustments for certain positions. And make adjustments and then it's good for another year and, and sometimes it's good for a couple of years. So that has not been the case in 2022. It's been ever-changing and very challenging as well. The both pay and the availability of employees is impacting our, our, the availability of us to hire. The most qualified candidates and there's a recent study with the Bureau of Labor Statistics that said in Colorado, there's. Two, for every two job openings, there's one unemployed person. So if you take that, the low unemployment rate, you can see that, that Colorado is just out of available workforce. There is just a limited amount of people to pull into the workforce in both. Hard-to-fill positions as well as professional build, professional positions. So the combination of these factors is making, is making it difficult for us to fill our positions as well. And to solve for these issues, our desired approach is going to be to, our desired approach would be to. Apply up to $3 an hour across the board for all of our full-time year-round positions outside of step plan employees. Those have already been adjusted, but looking to go up to $3 an hour for full-time year-round incumbents. Because we do feel that all of our positions at this point are hard to fill, whether it's, you know, the, the hard-to-find labor as well as hard-to-find professional.
And we got to that $3 because of the benchmarking that we did with, with some of the pay analysis that we had. So we know that's probably our worst-case scenario there where we're behind on some positions. When we're comping them is we're behind $3 and so. Do we know exactly how many that is? No, but it's, you know, somewhere between 30 to 50 of our positions potentially that, that we would say that would see that kind of thing and then the question is. You know, do, if that's a standard that we're using, do we apply that standard across the board? In the messaging and, you know, showing, this is the internal conversation we've been having a lot of between the three of us here. And what's that messaging that we're doing to all? You know, the, I mean, like we said, if we take the step out, let's say we're 170 other full-time employees that we're dealing with out there and their importance to the town. So I think that's why we're here recommending that that $3 across the board is what we're gonna apply to all of those positions in there.
Dana, when you say up to $3. The, the intent isn't to go through and pick and choose departments because not all of our departments align directly in competitive sex. Would this be a $3 raise across the board per hour?
With very few exceptions. We, I want to make sure before I commit to the absolute across the board. There's maybe some positions or some individuals that were hired very competitively. But for the most part, it is going to be $3 across the board. I just want a small caveat in case there's something when I'm looking. More closely at the data to, to make sure.
And I think that, you know, in addition to the. The increase in pay, I think it's extremely important to have that along with, you know, taking a look at our cultural environment and the culture that we set. And to be proactive on some of the non-monetary. Aspects of your, of the work culture that we, we've fostered to be an employer of choice in the county.
I agree. And everything that I've read says that the financial, mental and. Financial, mental and physical well-being of your employees is all important, so it's a three-legged stool and you can't ignore the others and culture speaks to. The well-being of our employees, so it's not all financial. I believe that it's all of those things that contribute to the culture.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
Agree more with Jay's comment around culture and your agreement with it. I think that's spot on and just to make sure the decision-makers have the tools to make the right decisions.
Sure retains them and the pay helps get them in the door.
Settle down, hopefully when inflation settles down a little bit, then I think it will. Right now, inflation is hurting everyone so much that, you know, now it's just trying to keep up.
It really is. It's, it's hard to keep up and that's why the pay study has proved to be so difficult.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm.
Had a shift, but the reality is though, that there just isn't enough. Workers to fill our positions and the type of workers that the town.
Absolutely, we don't want to see our staff go backwards.
Yeah.
And I think once inflation settles down, then yeah, I mean, culture is, is everything, but I mean, it is now too, so I love the three-legged stool analogy, it's perfect. Seasonals? What are we doing with seasonals?
So the seasonals are kind of the phase two. We will make sure that in transit and any, when, right now, our winter seasonal positions that match our full-time. Are in heavy equipment and transit and we will be competitive with those as well, so those will match. Our seasonal, the seasonal positions that are full-time year-round and then we are, we have modeled $20 start minus tipped, minus juniors and some other things for.
Minus, what was the second one?
Tipped and junior positions.
Like junior life cards?
Got it.
Yeah, so.
Awesome, because I think that's the standard now.
So the amount, the ask is approximately a million dollars for the 2023 budget.
The way we budget is a million. I mean, it's, it's all basic math, right? With, you know, at $3, that's six, a little over $6,000 a person times 170 positions and you, you see that. The fact is, it won't cost that because, I mean, the good news is it does cost us that, that means we're at full strength. I mean, you're already down 11 positions in there, so until those are filled, it's not costing you a penny and so. But we always budget for that scenario, right? That we're at full strength and that that's what it would be, so.
We'll call it best-case scenario instead of worst-case scenario.
Yeah. Both ways to look at that, but, yeah. And which is, you know, concerning, right? Because it's, that's, that's a big number and we know we already have a big. Wages is obviously the, our biggest expense next to capital and. But it's that investment, once you make it, you're, you own it and, but it's also the most important investment we make because we can't do anything without the people. Be here to, to drive those plow trucks and do all that stuff that we have to do, so.
And we've always had good people and we still do and I think this is really important. I applaud that we're no longer waiting and we're gonna make a move.
So we'd like, timing of this is we really would like to, you know, we are only just a little, little more than 30 days out of actually starting our first pay period for. Our first pay period in 2023 actually starts December 17th. And that's when we would like to make this effective, that gives us 30 days to roll it out, to talk to staff. And to, you know, get everything set up and payroll and do it and so they still, this is, you know, this would be effective then and then you would still have the. Regular merit increases on their anniversary date scattered throughout that 2023 calendar year.
Yeah, thanks so much. I think this is all great stuff and wholeheartedly support the $3 bump. I think that's great. I love what you were talking about with the culture piece. I think that's a super important investment. Agree with Dick there. And I would, my sense is this challenge is gonna be front and center for a while here and, and I just, I guess I worry about that, you know, 10, 11% vacancy rate, so. You know, certainly understand that, hey, for every two jobs, there's only one person to fill it, but I'd love to make sure that the town is investing to make sure we fill all of those vacant spots because. You know, like you said, Rick, it's, it's the most important investment we can make and yeah, it's a significant investment and yeah, you've bought into that once you make those raises, but. My, I continue to worry about burnout with staff and losing super talented people and yeah, I want to make sure we are more on the pointy end of the spear there when it comes to. Having lower unfilled spots.
I agree, the burnout does come from when employees are understaffed, overworked and so. Hopefully, hopefully it will address some burnout.
Yeah, I, and I think we just, my, my two cents is I think we've got a, this is a good move and I think we need to do more, so thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, we should be the employer of choice, transit, cops, plow, everything.
So any formal approval of this would, would happen in the form of a, when we do. A budget amendment down the road to that? Who you would vote on, so.
Great, thank you.
One of the big drivers of inflation is employees.
First. Need it.
First.
Someone down, like 35 or 45, 45 workers from Texas and brought them. Because they just.
Oh, that's.
Policy 5R. Compatibility Exterior Building Materials Work Session.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Let's talk exterior building materials. We really have three different topics to cover under this and they're all within Policy 5R of the Development Code. So we're gonna start with brick. This is something that the Planning Commission, applicants have brought the discussion of brick before Planning Commission and you guys. Over the past year, I know I've heard it a few times, wire points assigned for brick. The Planning Commission had several discussions on this. They noted that brick was historically used within town, but for buildings where there's more of an enduring aspect. To those and like institutional buildings that were gonna be around a long time, so. The Planning Commission is recommending that we remove the current negative points that are assigned for the use of brick above 25%. For institutional uses, so buildings such as like schools. Government buildings, there's a defined definition for institutional use already in the code. Things would be exempt from points assigned, negative points for brick, but negative points would still be assigned for brick. Under residential because historically there was very limited use of brick on residential buildings, so that's their recommendation for brick. We'll move on to composite wood unless, this is a work session, so if you have questions, like, interrupt me. The other material that's brought, been brought up quite a bit by applicants recently is composite wood siding. We brought a lot of research to the Planning Commission. They had two meetings and work sessions to discuss this material. They recognize that there are some good sustainability aspects to this material, but they also had a field trip to view it on-site. Both in Leadville and then again in a, a project in Buena Vista and at this time, they feel that the use of composite wood siding should still be assigned negative points. It's a product that's been around like five to 10 years, so perhaps there's still a durability question surrounding the use of that, so. They've recommended assigning negative points for composite wood siding. It's currently not commented on in the code, but we would add it in there. And that brings me to the last thing that we want to discuss is there's a current Policy 5, really long laborious paragraph that discusses the materials. That are allowed. It's one of your attachments in your packet. It's recommended by the Planning Commission that we update that with a materials matrix. It would make it much easier for applicants to understand. What materials are allowed, which ones are assigned negative points and how many. We think it brings a lot of clarity to that paragraph. We would retain the important and substantive pieces of that paragraph and just pull it down into the matrix. But we're recommending an amendment to the current Policy 5 that would replace that long paragraph with that matrix. So those are the three recommended changes. Chris, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Questions, comments, concerns? And we do have a few questions listed for you guys, but.
With the composite wood siding, is there a way, you know, some of it certainly looks a lot better than others.
That was their concern as well.
Yeah, is there a way to articulate in code? We only want the good stuff?
Um.
I don't, I don't know how you could do it, that's why I'm asking.
We could go the route of describing like that you could only use. The lap boards of it. I think that looks better. The problem with that product is it comes in so many different variations. You can buy really large squares. Of the prefabbed material and then they get put on in large squares and the issue with that is if you don't do it exactly right, the seeming looks off or it just, it can look kind of sloppy. So we could do something where we could limit the, the style of product, but the, the more you limit what's. Allowed, like you, we don't want to get into like a cookie cutter situation where we're saying you can only use this length of board and, and that sort of thing, especially outside of the historic district where there's a lot more freedom and. You, it is written that you could use it, you would just get negative points for it.
Does ask?
No.
Does a town like Aspen, I, so the reason I'm interested in continuing to look at this is for sustainability. It just seems like it makes a lot of sense to be moving away from wood. So I'm wondering in some of these other communities that do have, you know, nice looking homes, what are they saying? How are they? And I'm sorry that I didn't call you and ask that question or give you a heads up that I would ask a question like that, but, it, I was just, you know, by what Dick said is like, is there a way to say, we only want the nice stuff? It seems like this is a problem that's not unique to us and I'm just wondering how it's been handled.
Yeah, I, I think we see the, the, uh, that type of product more on, you know, reskins of multifamily buildings or newer, you know, like our, our workforce housing projects, more so than seeing a new single family homes or, something where the, the dollar value is so high that they're really just putting the materials that they want, because they want them. So I think, you know, unless it's probably a workforce housing project in Aspen, you're not gonna see a lot of, siding. I think going to a place like Leadville, BV, um, other, you know, other communities that are honestly on kind of the, the totem pole are probably a little bit below where Breckenridge is. Um, that, that's where you'll see it, see it more often. But, you know, very, very few people have asked about using it outside of, um, I, I think Gold Creek was the most recent one where they wanted to use that, um, on that reskin, you know, putting over the, the current cement structure. Um, and then ultimately went to Hardy because of, um, the point implications. But, I mean, going back, it, it took us a long time to warm up to Hardy to really like, validate that and think that was a, a product that we wanted out there. And I think this current planning commission is kind of mirroring that, previous discussion with Hardy, that before they jump all the way in, they just want to get a little bit more reassurance that, um, you know, the look is right for the town. And there, there were a couple of commissioners that I think were, before we went to Leadville and, and BV, were a little bit more excited and then they saw particularly the development it is across the street from the modular factory and how some of that was applied and then they were a little bit more apprehensive.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think we have to be, down the road is gonna be technology, uh, techno improvements, that this stuff could look better. Certainly to Kelly's point, it's, it's more sustainable. As long as we have flexibility, is if the, the work, the, the product improves, that we can kind of rethink that.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like what we've learned too, a lot of it, they're just the finish aspect where it looks a little, there's kind of a sheen on it. Um, I think they were concerned, but it's really the installer, depending on who the contractor is. Um, it's, it, that's really the, that's hard to control, you know, the quality of the contractor installing it.
Chris, can you, or Sarah, can you walk through and maybe I, I missed this, but like, what changed? From your matrix that, that's in front of us, what is different than what is written in code right now? What points are changing?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring that up. So notably, brick, um, right now you would get negative points for, anything above, you'd, actually you could get up to negative six points as the current code is written. It's, um, not broken out by facade, percentage. Um, that's one thing we wanted to clarify here is how much you use, because right now it's, it's kind of like, um, the way the code is written, you could, if you go above twenty five percent, you might as well go all in and get your negative six points because you're gonna get them anyway. Um, to, to be at a hundred percent, but we kind of broke it down into negative two, negative four, negative six, depending on the percentage of the facade that's covered. And then again, the note for institutional buildings wouldn't be applied negative points. Um, and then we added that clarification for the percentages under every material. Um, I don't think it currently exists for metal or, um, fibers.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was, it's funny, like when we, you know, work with architects we work with all the time, we read that section, we just know how that section works. Like we talked to Suzanne. She knows exactly our, our calculations, but when we get a new architect, they read that, you're like, what's this about non-natural materials and stucco? How is this applied to, metal? Isn't that natural? That's a, you know, a natural occurring element or, we figured it would just be easier to put it in the matrix and say the breaks that we actually want and, there's, for that same point, there's very little changes from how we actually apply it, but it's just to be written a lot more clear for anyone to understand.
And it's per facade, there can be four facades, right? Or, so you could get negative twenty four points if you're doing, uh, each side of the, of a house all in brick.
No.
Want to clarify how that's written?
Yeah.
That's not how we apply.
Yeah, it, it is capped, but it is like if you did do, um, let's say metal siding where you had seventy five percent on this one facade and the rest had no metal, you would get the maximum negative six points, but you are capped, um, if every facade, we're not gonna multiply that by four.
Which brings up the question, is negative six enough? For that final category, that's say sixty six to seventy five percent, up to a hundred percent. Is that enough?
I think it's different. Like if you're talking about an eleven hundred square foot house versus a, twelve thousand square foot building, right? Like fifty percent metal is different on each one to look like in the, in the grand scale.
I guess what I'm more getting at is, are we okay with an all brick house? You can still make up six negative points. It's hard, but you can do it.
Yeah, and, and we kind of internally had that conversation and we, we stayed kind of within the point range because we looked at it, compared to other things that we'd probably assign more importance like, like height, like density, and then we're like, if we're starting to give them more for, you know, like an aesthetic material than we are for some of these other things that are really important when we look into totality of a project, where it's a little bit, uh, unbalanced, but we will point out, um, like for, uh, for stucco, we have the note in there where you could, there's, there's basically two sections where you can get negative points under, um, uh, under, um, policy five R. And we do note that if the color is an, under, like a non-earth tone color, you could get additional points, um, under section A in addition to just the totality of the stucco, which is new. Before there was just one section, section A, that, you know, you could have a hundred percent stucco and you could have a pink, but you would be capped at points previously. So that's one thing we did change.
I appreciate the table for the clarity it brings. Um, there's certain areas with the stucco where the language is a little bit ambiguous, ambiguous too. Um, do we even want to allow non-natural colors? Should that even be an option? And then on brick as well, we say bricks should be natural earth tone. Should we change that language to make it must? Be natural?
Yeah.
Earth tone?
If we wanted to go to an,
Pieces absolutes?
If you wanted to go to absolute, then we would also modify five A, but, the kind of materials always lived in five R. And so to make something absolute, we want to put it under the absolute policy, uh, where this is just really controlling negative points versus an absolute. Now, under policy five A, it's essentially limited to kind of colors like our chroma scheme where we make sure the, intensity of color, uh, for painted surfaces is not too high.
And Chris, with the paragraph we'll replace, kind of two thirds down, we talk about roof materials, and call out inappropriate exterior building materials. Will we lose that section or will that stay in there?
We could retain that as kind of a header. Uh, this section has a leading paragraph that would probably be good to retain as well and, uh, so maybe coupling that above the matrix is a, is suggested.
Okay, great. I like that.
Any questions or comments? I, I would like you to consider, um, some, some limit, on all of these that would not allow you to do a hundred percent of a house. I'm okay with a hundred percent of a facade because that can be interpreted a bunch of different ways. But to do a hundred percent of a house in a neighborhood that doesn't have any brick in brick or in metal, should just not allow that. Instead of just giving negative six points. And, and part of that is, you know, our, our lexicon in town has always been multiple materials for the most part. And those are the houses that look better, the ones that are wood and stone or, you know, wood and stone and metal, as opposed to, some of the older, like, all wood or all, what was that stuff, T nine or whatever?
T nine eleven.
T nine, yeah. So I mean, we, we still have buildings that are like that and they're the ones that always looked worse, so it's just something to think about while you're.
I think we could bring it back and have an amendment to policy five A along with policy fiber based on, based on that recommendation.
Remember, it's like, uh, Colorado, now Colorado used to be all of that.
Yeah.
It still might be.
I was thinking of T one eleven, that's Pringle talking there.
Yeah.
That's probably where I remember it from.
Yeah, I agree with that comment. I, yeah, a number of these I'd like to just tap in, then it becomes an absolute. Stucco, I, you know, we don't need to get back to the days of all the stucco. Or a long time ago.
I think it's worked pretty well in that regard. We have, we don't see a lot of stucco. We haven't seen it for years.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Great job. And planning commission, thank you.
Yeah, their discussion was really good.
I'm gonna take five while they set up.
I do.
This next one's gonna take.
For fifty one.
So you have, you're a feces. We knew you were thinking that.
Gavel that one down. All right. Move on with Stillson property housing work session. Who's leading this, Lori?
Not leading this. Melanie is leading this.
Okay.
Thank you for having us. Um, we're really excited to be here and discuss some different options, for the potential development stables village on the Stillson owned, uh, the town owned Stillson lot. Um, Stillson is a thirty eight acre lot, uh, currently being used by Public Works and was formerly home to the Breckenridge Equestrian Center. Um, to give you a little background, this past spring, we issued an RFP for ninety units at six to ten UPA. Um, and selected local architect Suzanne Allen Sabo and her development team to move forward with some initial designs for the property. Um, however, after the initial feedback from council, we've worked with her to downsize the proposed development, um, to two different options between forty and sixty four units, across seven acres, um, which will utilize the flat portion of the Stillson parcel only and will not change any of the uses for Public Works. Um, we are very excited about this opportunity, um, to work with quality, a quality local architect, um, as her team understands our code and is deeply connected to the community. And Alan Sabo has brought on Denver-based builder Gene Meyer of Thrive, um, who actually owns a market rate unit in Lincoln Park. So, that's, that's exciting for us, but we're, um, we're more excited to potentially partner with Thrive on this development because of their unwavering commitment to sustainability and carbon neutrality. In fact, if approved, this development will be the first carbon neutral, net zero housing development in the country. Um, after this short presentation, we'll allow the development team to present. After this short presentation, we'll allow the development team to present where they will present two different options. During that presentation, Gene will speak to the project goals and his prior successful developments in sustainable building. While Suzanne, Dan and Elena will discuss the proposed development options, site layouts and address all of your density questions. Both layouts do work well to create good connections to the Wellington, Lincoln Park neighborhood and potential connections and enhancements to the trails and open space located behind the development. So option one in your packet is sixty four units, all two and three bedroom duplexes and townhomes. Those would all be eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI with a seven point one million dollar subsidy from the town. That shakes out to about a little over one thousand eleven hundred to each unit. And then option two is a, is forty units with a mix of single families duplexes and townhomes. That option is a hundred and twenty percent to a hundred and sixty percent AMI and would require a eleven point two million dollar subsidy. This morning, we were able to meet with our housing committee to review both options while considering density and site plans while the and the committee was strongly supportive of option one with some minor modifications to include some options for single family homes, but maintain and ADUs to maintain that sixty to sixty four unit mix. What is not in your packet yet is that we did, the housing team did a little bit of an analysis of the actual buildable acreage at Wellington and Lincoln Park versus the buildable acreage to try and get some apples to apples in terms of units per acre. And Stillson, or sorry, the stables development came out at about nine point one units per acre, whereas Wellington, Lincoln Park together is about eight point four UPA. So the, the AMI range proposed in option one is also the ideal range between eighty and one twenty AMI to source different grant opportunities while still addressing housing for our missing middle demographic. The housing team has been, as you know, and been supportive of, we've been primarily focused on rentals and lower AMI rentals, which we're excited about. We have about over four hundred coming online here in the next two years. But we're looking forward to the opportunity to develop a different type of development to meet the diverse needs of our community. With this having the potential to be the first net zero carbon neutral development, we've been talking to the state already about different grants we can source. And a lot of those agencies are very excited for this project and are actually pushing us to source the fullest amount of grants. So we're looking forward to that to help with our subsidy and focusing on the sustainable development will also allow the neighborhood to stay affordable over time, which is something that I think we've worked through Alta Verde and really taken notice to that those utility costs are really going to help with our affordability. So with that, we're looking forward to the council's feedback and I'm going to pass this along to the development team. And if you have any questions, feel free to interject. Hi Suzanne Allen Sabo with Alan Garrett Architecture and also the managing member of Stables Village LLC developer on this project. And this fine gentleman here is Gene Myers with Thrive Home Building. He's out of Denver, but he also has a home in Lincoln Park, has been in the community for a while, part time. And I also would like to introduce some of the other folks on our team who are here tonight. Norris Land Planners, Elena Scott. Thrive. Yeah, new face. Yeah, exactly. You'll see her again later. Dan, Dan Chapman's with me. He's with Alan Garrett Architecture. He's an architect now and he rocks. And then Fleece Huntley, who's writing all our HOA docs and doing all the boring stuff from the backend. As I'm sure you're aware, our sustainable sustainability goals are lofty on this project. We want to highlight the fact that affordable housing can showcase sustainability and reduce climate impact. We would like Breckenridge to raise the bar. I know we got a pretty high bar already, but on meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs through net zero greenhouse gas emissions. So with that, I'm going to let Gene do what he does, which is amazing.
Well, I'm Gene Myers with Thrive Home Builders and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be part of the team. Thank you Suzanne. So I started Thrive Home Builders thirty years ago this month. And so we should be having a big party, but interest rates are really high. So we're a little down on that. We're a very energy efficient builder, ResNet, which keeps track of all of the Hearst ratings in the country. Named us the most energy efficient builder in North America in twenty twenty one and in twenty twenty two, the most energy efficient production builder. We've been building in the, the US Department of Energy Zero Energy Ready Home Program since the very beginning of that program. They have an awards program called Grand Awards for Housing Innovation, and we've won thirteen of those over the last ten consecutive years, more than any other builder. All of our homes are in that program as well as an EPA indoor air plus, which is an indoor air quality program, but particularly radon is a big issue up here. And so EPA indoor plus guides us on how to address that. And we're the largest builder in Colorado of net zero energy homes. Next slide. Actually, I'm old, so I thought she would be much better at that. So we've been EPA indoor plus builder of the year and have gotten a lot of accolades on our green building and our, our lead certification of our building. Next slide. We're really focusing on resiliency. This is a photo from the Marshall Fire. The houses in the foreground were our houses. When I saw this image, I really, I actually I actually called the SAF meeting on a Saturday to talk about how we were going to rebuild and we didn't lose a single home. And so we're very focused on like carrying forward on that. I couldn't help but listen to your prior Jada item on siding and we're big believers in the cementitious siding. You can hold a blow torch to it. And so I think it's great that you guys allow that. Next slide. We, I think at one time were the largest for sale affordable builder in the state. This is a two hundred and seventy one unit project that we built on the side of the old Stapleton Airport. All of these were at eighty percent immediate income, had a Hearst score averaging twenty six. All had solar indoor air quality certification, DOE zero energy ready and lead certified as well. Next slide. They were built with a double two by four wall, which in this climate zone is also a really good solution. An estimated annual energy savings for these eighty percent of AMI customers, buyers were, was thirteen hundred and eighty dollars a year. So that's real money to a low income family.
And just to say, I've, the lowest Hearst score I have ever personally gotten on a house was forty six. So this is incredible.
Next slide. We use private financing, which I think we're also anticipating to use here. Our customers were able to access three percent down, down payments through both conventional and FHA loans. The gap funding on this was fifty to seventy five thousand dollars a unit, plus a, plus a free lot. And then carbon neutrality is something that we're focused on. Our goal is to be a one hundred percent carbon neutral builder by the end of twenty twenty three. And so we obviously would like to see this project become the first carbon neutral project in Breckenridge as well. It's important that we focus on buildings if we're looking for the twenty fifty goals that that we've agreed to as a country and as an international community. With thirty eight percent of the emissions being contributed by the built environment, you just can't get to where you want to go by twenty fifty without really working hard on buildings. This is just an animation of the process of how we actually calculate carbon neutrality. So one of the real tricks is you have to know every piece and part that goes into the house. And to be honest with you, builders don't know every piece and part that go into each house. And so we designed these in a did with a digital design tool that can automate a bill of materials and, and identify everything that's in the house so that we can then make that calculation. This is a home that is, it's our first carbon neutral home. It's under construction at Fort Collins right now. So this house had nineteen thousand pieces. And if we all wonder, you know, why aren't houses perfect? That's one reason. And why can't they get everything right? Well, that's another reason. It's a little bit of an overstatement. There were, there were only four hundred and forty three different kinds of parts. And so our job is to go out and find what's the carbon footprint for each kind of, of those parts and then add them up. So we get this automated bill of materials. We then go out and look for environmental product declarations for each of the four hundred and forty three parts. They aren't available yet in all cases. And so we do have to make some assumptions, but I did just notice that in September, California signed into law a requirement that homes by twenty twenty seven will have to have environmental product declarations. And so they're just such a big part of the economy. I think all the manufacturers and material suppliers will comply with that. And this will get easier over time. That particular house had a hundred and thirty eight metric tons of carbon. You can buy carbon offsets at about fifteen dollars a ton. So this is about two thousand dollars to offset this house. And we're working on identifying local offsets that we could support. I love the Swan River Restoration Project and I would love it if we could find a way to calculate what those offsets could be. So this is a, a photo that kind of choked me up when I first saw it. It's taken from one of those surviving homes in the Marshall Fire and it just sort of looked like a war zone and it does seem like the fight against climate change is a battle and we're on the front lines of that. Would very much like to make this project the first one in, in Breckenridge and the state and maybe in the country.
Thank you, Gene. Elena, you want to come on up? Hello, everyone. It's good to see you. So we're going to present both the sixty four unit option plan and the forty unit option plan. We're going to go through concept one, the sixty four unit plan first. To just orient everybody, we have Stables Road that's connecting to Bridge Street on the north of your screen. That connects up to the Wellington Road and there's also a bus stop in that location. The site itself, as Melanie pointed out, is much larger. We have the solar panels in this location. Underneath these buses here is where we have the power lines. And then from a grading perspective, we have quite a bit of grade change between this site and then the site that we're proposing with the community. The neighborhood being situated in this location works for a couple of different ways. One, it reduces our need for additional grading. We're able to have a more minimalized footprint with the neighborhood itself, but also the neighborhood adjacency. A big part of us planning this property was really thinking about the neighborhoods adjacent to us as a whole between Wellington and Lincoln Park and how we can complement that neighborhood and also will work well with that community. As we know, it's important to those residents that live there to have some, you know, important things that I'll talk about on one of the next slides. I think one of the biggest things with this plan itself is the buffer concept that we've provided along Stables Road. That buffer is between fifty and sixty five feet wide on the side of the house, on the side of the homes here. I'm actually going to go through these a little differently. Here's that buffer. It's important to us to be able to link a trail system through that green space. That green space is complementary and scaled to many of the other green spaces in our adjacent neighborhoods, but also just provides that offset so that there's privacy for the existing neighborhood. And it creates this great green link from all the way to the bus stop and then up to the bike park, which is located here. From a topography perspective, we're, we were talking about this earlier, but we're at about ninety seven here at the Stables Road and Bridge, Bridge Street intersection, and we're going up to ninety seven fifty. So there's quite a bit of grade change on the property, but it's totally doable from an engineering perspective with this layout. And, and it tracks very well with the adjacent neighborhood. So as part of our layouts, as I mentioned, the, the buffer, but the, a couple of other things that were really important to this neighborhood development. We are looking at height with same heights. The buffers themselves between the homes is something that we wanted to have very complementary scale. We wanted to think about home orientation for solar. We have obviously very important sustainability and carbon neutrality goals. Lot orientation was important to us. So you're not looking directly into the homes on the adjacent property, but rather looking internally to the new stables neighborhood and having that large buffer space between the units. This plan itself has four different unit types. I think that it's when you're looking at the plan to note when, this is a party that Dan put together. All of the homes on the proposed stable village have an attached garage. So when you look at the size of a unit and it might, if it does look larger to you, it's, it is because that garage is attached to each unit, including the townhomes have a, a, an attached garage. This plan has two and three bedroom units, which Suzanne or Dan can answer more questions on. The townhomes themselves line up very nicely with townhomes adjacent to this property. Those are centralized. So from a scale perspective, they'll look relatively the same as all the other units with two story heights and solar. One of the most, the green space also around those townhomes connects the front yards of both duplexes and the townhome. So we have a nice interior loop space. That of course, following our sustainability goals, will have very low water use. But really creates a nice protected loop for families and those that will be coming in and out of the homes on the horseshoe loop. There are two different unit types that will take advantage of a small grade change. The units in orange here are downhill duplexes and those will appear as one story from horseshoe loop and two stories from the rear when you're coming up stables. So even if it's a multi-unit structure, we're able to keep height in mind. That's going to be the right scale for adjacent properties. Another part of this is uphill units. And so then as we move up the hill and we're towards the toe of the slope, these units will also work with a grade and that just gives us some different options for people to have different kinds of private spaces for their own yard. So not just those public open spaces, but also a more private space that you can, that you can have for your family. This item three right here is a little community structure that we would be planning for composting, recycling. So having one cohesive place within the neighborhood for that use. This plan has forty eight duplexes in total and eighteen townhomes. There are three bedroom units in the townhomes, which is something we wanted to ensure that no matter the product type that we're thinking, we're about the full spectrum of housing that's available to residents as they're either looking to buy their first property in Breckenridge or even make a move from one of the rental communities or from the adjacent community. This plan has a hundred and seventy six bedrooms. Thank you, Melanie, for doing that calculation. And I don't know if I missed anything else on this. Yeah. Okay. So now we'll go to the forty unit plan. Oh, here's our solar orientation model and we did model this. So you'll get to see that here in a few slides. So here is Wellington Road and the bus stop. And this is coming up the hill on Stables Road.
Keep in mind, this is just massing. This isn't architecture yet.
Yes. Just starting to look at how the units fit together, the, the space around them. Our lots are a lot wider, so there's bigger setbacks. One of the discussions today was actually even if, you know, as we're looking at, you know, modifying a plan that fits that right exact mix of unit types, you know, would some of those give, you know, pull or push a little bit just to make sure that we have that right blend of housing types. This is looking from Bridge Street over towards the west.
Yeah, because our, our average width on lots in this option is what sixty feet, sixty five feet? Because our our average width on lots in this option is what sixty feet, sixty-five feet? So the average width in Lincoln Park and Wellington's in the forties. So they're much wider lots.
Yep. Another view. The bike park. A trail connecting up. Okay, now we're going to go to the second plan. This is the forty unit plan. Same connections would be proposed, same general layout of the the horseshoe loop road and the alley. We wanted to maintain that neighborhood feel of having the buffer along Stables Road, the internal green space, the uphill and downhill units. It's just lesser density and some different mix of unit types. I'm sorry, I went too fast. On this, again, all the homes have a garage. Some of the duplexes do incorporate a carport and a garage. But a different kind of variety of homes depending on the site and location of those units within the property. On this one, we have single-family residences. There are twelve single-family homes. There are a few four-bedroom homes integrated into this concept, and so we did go from two bedrooms to four bedrooms in this plan. This plan has a total of a hundred and twenty-nine bedrooms. We did maintain a community building here, the internal green concept. And the in the pathway linking. From the bus stop and the one bringing over from the Wellington neighborhood all the way up to the bike park and trails. Solar. And then I look at this massing, not architecture. And we can go back to any of these slides. And this is that. Look at the the lot size in in the sixty-four unit plan, concept one, we do have some lots closer to sixty feet in with. With concept two, closer to forty. And seventy.
And then the existing.
Forty-two. There you go. And we're happy to go to any other slides and can come back to those and talk through.
That might be a good one to to focus on and either Dick or Todd kind of weigh in on where the housing committee. Landed today is.
Yeah, we had a good meeting today. Basically, staff was there, the development team. And and the thought process was to. Take a look at option one and maybe get some other options, kind of dovetailing off of that. I think the big piece that that just boiling it down really simply is. The amount of subsidy, I think it was an additional four million or. I don't think it was seven, so four million bucks for twenty-four or less units didn't really. Make that much sense to our perspectives. The option one that we were looking at is maybe sprinkling in a couple more single families with some ADUs to kind of. Not only have some duplexes, but also have some of the single-family units that option two had. One of the things that and you highlighted this, Elena, that I really like here is the. The width on these is is much more than Wellington and Lincoln Park. So the the single, the the units per acre is higher than than Wellington and Lincoln Park. But I think a lot of that's tied into, you know, you've got the the twenty townhome units there clustered together. So I think that's driving up some of that because the. The duplex units have got pretty significant space between them. So a little bit. I think. Eucolic feel compared to, say, Lincoln Park and Wellington. Anything you want to add there?
A couple of things. Um, yeah, the 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 UPI is or UPA is a little bit, it's eight eight point four to nine point one. So it's. Slightly higher.
Huh? Between one and two, between Lincoln.
Lincoln Park slash Wellington and one.
I get you.
The other piece, we talked a lot about. How this was going to read from Lincoln Park and Wellington neighborhood and. And, you know, they're taking advantage of some grade. Variances and and so. And correct me if I'm wrong, Suzanne, but you know, I I think. Much of this project's going to feel like, you know, one story from Lincoln Park because of the grade goes down. It's lower. The 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 starting grade is lower than the than the grade on Lincoln Park. Is that accurate?
Somewhat. I mean, the uphill side is a little higher. It's it's pretty flat in the center, you know, where the horse stuff is.
Density part in the center is going to feel lower, for sure. Yeah, those were the big things. I every unit has a garage, which I think is important to the workforce. As Todd said, we're we're kind of pushing to do a little bit of a hybrid with, starting with, you know, Plan One. And trying to bring in a few more or a few single-family homes, three and four bedroom. The move-up type units that that I think we have a real need for right now. So Suzanne's going to go back to work and see if she can bring some of that.
Can you on? The number one, can you guys talk to us about parking? Because it's not clear how that works.
So go ahead, Elena, but we we are not showing some of the parking at this point, but but we do have a some parking.
You'll be able to park in the driveway as well as in the garage. So we do have the more than two spaces per unit shown on this plan.
Okay.
What isn't shown is additional guest parking at this point.
Yeah.
We have some guest parking parking in this location.
Right.
We do have some extra guest desk parking within the alley on the townhome. Portion of the community, but we could pull out a few different more locations in between, like example right here. So there are more ways that we can add that into this plan. But you're at your house, you'll be able to park your cars at your house.
I just think, I mean, the Wellington and Lincoln Park are they're always talking about parking. And so. Those four spots or whatever, however many, we're definitely going to need more.
Well, I think in in those two locations, you have to, in a lot of the alleys, you have to park sideways, like. You know, perpendicular to the garage door. So in this, we've laid it out so you could head in and actually have two full cars, and they're not sticking out in the alley.
Yeah, I understand that. But if you have a guest or if you have three cars at your house, then. And I don't really see how this parking situation in the townhomes could possibly work. I mean, someone's going to park behind, you know, a garage or whatever that. They're not there, even if it's marked as being guest parking. I think it just it needs to be more clear and separated. I don't think it can just be all lumped in there.
I have a more general question. Maybe Dick and Todd, you can lay in because the rest of the council, this is one of the first times we see this. We see this approach. And we know there's this need for four ownership homes, but I'm having a hard time seeing this holistically. This is a phased approach. Are we considering phase two? Why did we prioritize this over block eleven? Can you guys talk to that a little bit?
I think this has the infrastructure is is far less of an investment than the than the second stage. Are we going to do a second stage? I don't know. But there's an option to. I mean, there's an opportunity to if we choose to. Yeah, I think those are probably the main reasons. I could tell you from a staff perspective on block eleven that there are, there are still. Issues that we have talked about that are, you know, what's the final look and what's going to happen with. Parking out there, etc., that haven't been put to bed yet. That I think before we go in and finalize what that build's going to look like. For the next for-sale housing development on block eleven. And so this was something that was there, ready to go for us and a smaller site to tackle.
Do you have any idea like how many total parking spaces you have in in one compared to two? All all in, all included?
I mean, it's set up in the same manner with parking space in the driveway and in the garage. We did add additional parking to show here that we could add additional guest parking.
No, what I'm wondering, okay, so a hundred and seventy-six bedrooms for a hundred and twenty-nine bedrooms. How many parking spaces total?
So we're meeting code, like we're meeting one per bedroom, which is what we're supposed to do. I mean, yeah, so if it's a three-bedroom unit, we have. Two spaces in a garage and one outside, or if we're potentially two outside and one in the garage, so.
On for both. So it's one, one parking spot per bed. Other questions?
Where does this fit in? Would this be an upgrade from Wellington? Would it be on par for Wellington? How are we? Seeing this neighborhood within the diversity of our housing stock?
I I mean, we hope you get better as you keep building, right? You know, so I hope it's an upgrade. I I mean, I think the. The green aspect that Jean's company brings is an enormous upgrade. The savings in utilities is going to be tremendous. So from an affordability standpoint, that's very exciting and a and a. You know, net zero standpoint is. Is very exciting to me.
So I think the part that's not an upgrade is, at least as drawn here, it's all duplexes. Which I do not think is an upgrade from Wellington, and that's that's an issue for me, having a neighborhood that's just townhomes and duplexes.
Which I see where we act as to go back to work on, so.
One of the things I've been wrestling with, because I agree with you, right? Like, a lot of folks want the single family, right? Like, there's a higher demand for that, but. I can't, probably the the question I get asked the most out in public is like, all right, I've got a one-bedroom in Blue Fifty-Two, or I've got a two-bedroom in the Wellington. And and are you going to build more stuff that we can upgrade to? And so to me, this is an opportunity to really kind of invest in that, like, middle layer of our. Our workforce, folks who've been here five, ten years, you know, they figured out they like it. They're cool shoveling in May. And they want to, you know, they're they're trying to figure out how their life is going to exist in the mountains. And, you know, ideally, in my head, they'd all be single families, right? Because that's that's, everybody wants that. But as far as. Getting the the most kind of bang for your buck and taking care of the most, you know, people in the community, I think this is a really good option. One of the cool things from doing thirteen phases of new construction now and and helping sell projects is. The party walls on some of the, you know, stuff I was working on ten years ago. You you couldn't hear noise transfer between them, and I'm sure certainly things have gotten better now with the, you know, double two-by-four walls and. I'm certainly, you know, for for client satisfaction, they're going to be working on that to make sure that the the customer experience is good. You know, kind of back to your question, Carol, it it was neat going to Mountain Town twenty thirty for me. To me, this is a huge opportunity for us to to lead, right? When it comes to to setting the example and like. We we have an opportunity to build a carbon-neutral neighborhood in a ski town, right? This little ski town of five thousand people and. The storyline that that can kind of, you know, we can share out in the in the in the country, I think, is really good. And then to me, it's this investment in folks that have been here five and seven years that that are trying to figure out like. Hey, do I do I leave because I can't because I'm in a one-bedroom and we're having twins and it doesn't work? So I. I hear you, Eric, and that's, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to add, you know, a couple more in there, but. This is, I think, yeah, I think.
And what do you think about? Like to Eric's point about townhomes, are people, I mean, so do you do you see someone going from Blue Fifty-Two? Till and they can, they perceive a townhome in this place as an upgrade, or is it a lateral move? Or this is for someone that wants to get their foot in the door, and this would be their first, their first.
It's right in between.
I think the the locate, yeah, the missing middle, right, is like, it's certainly the missing middle. The location, I mean, it's the best in the in the town, right? Like, you got trails out the back door, you got Main Street out the front, you can get on the bus and go to the rec center or the grocery store or the ski area. Like, it's. Everybody wants to live in that zone, so.
Yeah, my question is, townhomes compared to the duplexes or compared to a hypothetical single-family home?
What we brought up in in our meeting and appreciated her bringing this up is like, it 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 helps get some folks to get their foot in the door, right? It's that initial, you got to have a lower price point, right? So you've got some of these two bedrooms that, because not everybody can afford a hundred and forty percent AMI duplex, right? So it's.
You start at three hundred and sixty-six thousand, and they go up to that one forty AMI. One forty-seven, so it's it's a very good range and as we speak.
Right.
So say that again, Melanie, it's.
Starts at three sixty-six.
For a duplex or for the?
It's a townhome.
It's based on bedroom count.
So there are a handful of duplexes and townhomes at that rate, and they go up to seven hundred and ninety.
Like Jay said, it's the missing middle and it's a, you know, is it your first home? Maybe, but it's 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 a little bit higher price point. Is it, you know, the four-bedroom and a hundred and sixty percent AMI? No, I mean, maybe it could be, but a couple of them at least, right? But it it really kind of hits that sweet spot in my mind of of of. Investing in our kind of the future leaders in our community, right, that are going to be here a long time. That's the value of, and I think why it's important to look at. Thoughtfully. Having the right amount of density on there to make sure we don't overprogram the site, but that we're we're utilizing this unbelievable asset to like. That 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 perfect spot of like, this neighborhood feels really good, and it's a good home for folks.
And with this layout, how would that impact Public Works? No storage? Does this have any impact? And would that be compatible with trucks coming through the night?
It'll be fine.
A different elevation. So where the horses are is kind of where this neighborhood would be. And the neighborhood or the location where all those trucks and stuff are is actually, what, fifteen feet lower, ten feet lower in elevation? It's it's a totally different, it's a very unique site if you walk out there past where the horses are currently.
Yeah, we just have to be plan our hauling. Typically, we're we're trying not to haul and dump in the middle of the night at that site anyways because of the proximity to housing. Most of that stuff, I believe, is when we're clearing out and hauling areas during the daytime, when you see trucks making, going out there and dumping, so.
We also increased the width of the alley. Based on working with Public Works. And then all the fire lanes that come through Bridge Street continue to connect onto Stables. So. That road would be upgraded, and so that experience would be better for Bridge Street and for the Lincoln Park neighborhood.
So between a concept one and two. It's for twenty-four less units, the saving would only be four million dollars?
The savings.
Costs is four million more in a subsidy. The developers handling the project, we're subsidizing it. So the project one, the larger one, we're subsidizing with seven million. Project two with less density, it's eleven million, so.
So it's like you got a jar of pickles, right, Jeffrey? And instead of having twelve pickles in it, you got twenty-four. So like, the cost of the jar was the same. So all the infrastructure costs are the same, whether you do lesser or greater.
That would be a difference of twelve pickles.
Right. It would be, yes.
I didn't have to use a calculator. So so actually, economy of scale, it's a less of a subsidy for the larger concept.
Well, from a financial standpoint, for sure. My also thing need plays too.
Yeah, and and another question is, have you guys considered the the current capacity of Wellington? If that's, is that going to be an issue? Would we have to have to do a? Traffic study or something like that?
The current traffic study came about that with this. Yep. That with this subdivision, regardless of which which one we choose, if we go with the sixty-four or the forty. We do not have any impact to upgrades on Wellington Road. However. Engineering might want some upgrades, so it's more of a want versus a need at this point.
No, I like I like the number of three bedrooms that were slated in the first proposal. I think that. That is where we have a need in the fact that whether you're in Valley Brook in a two-bedroom and you have a growing family. I think seeing the majority of those units, three bedrooms, is fantastic and seeing that the cost per bedroom is half. In the first proposal makes it very enticing. And I think going into looking at single-family homes in there may may distort that and blur the lines in between the two. And and then adding ADUs on top of that, I am trying to figure out parking for the ADUs if we had single families. I I'm very much in favor of the first proposal and how that is done. Because that is where the need is in the fact that we, for those single families that would be in there, we have those buy downs. That fill that gap of that eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar Kennington or something, the White Horse or or go whatever we're going. And so I really do see this being the need of that one twenty or one forty AMI and those three bedrooms. I think some of my questions are general and maybe already answered, but the power lines, do we have to do anything about that? Do we have to bury them, or are we concerned with them?
There's definitely a setback, and and they have, you know, they have. An easement for the power lines. So the power lines are centered within that easement, so we have to keep away from them. There are other parts of Lincoln Park and the Wellington that are really. Um, there are other parts of Lincoln Park and the Wellington that are really similar distance from the power lines. I don't know about concerns, uh, I mean, I I'm not an expert in that, so.
They're not variable either. Those are main transmission lines, so.
Um, would there be any income caps? Or this would be very much Lincoln Park, uh, Wellington style?
That's that is what we're proposing, um, uh, just an appreciation cap. And these would, this would include no market rate units. And all of them would be appreciated, uh, appreciation cap, they wouldn't be that light beat restriction at all.
That was, thank you. Um, the center driveway, that is adjacent to one of the greens at Lincoln Park. Is there, do we worry about danger of kids playing in those greens? And then and that being a main main artery to those townhomes? And is is it worth trying to skew that off of one of the greens?
I mean, it's not a direct shot across?
Yeah.
If you go out there, there's a big ditch. I don't know if it's going to remain, but probably it will. So there's a giant ditch there that, I don't know, I don't know if it stops kids, probably doesn't, right?
That's right.
If you look at the redevelopment of the plan, we can certainly look at ways to do that. We are trying to avoid any kind of light going into somebody's window, like directly into their home. And so because the importance of keeping maintaining these alleys through, you can see this one coming through as an example and this one coming through. So another.
I like the mode idea.
We can look at that when we're looking at at the alignment.
The um, the developer fee seems extremely reasonable. Is there, the developer is also the general contractor, I assume?
No, it's me. So we're just kind of doing this as a community thing. And it's also, you know, we get the architecture, we're not charging exorbitant fees or anything, but we're super excited about this project. We're doing another affordable project in Steamboat right now, too. So we're just excited about some of the things we can bring to the sustainable items to the affordable housing arena.
Excellent. Um, and then I guess lastly is kind of Debbie Downer question. But if, you know, we see interest rates are going up, economy is kind of we're 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 one season into a somewhat of a inflationary period with rates going up and housing starting to stall and materials being expensive. What happens budget wise and like, you know, whether we sell out all of these units or only sixty percent or only forty percent, we still have to plow all of them? We still have to do all the, you know, public works and everything? What happens to our carrying cost if we don't sell or rent all the units that are built?
So we, uh, you know, that's something we've been talking with Felice about. And obviously, Melanie can talk to this a little bit. But Melanie's been working on some HUD financing, um, getting people in the door for a much lower rate than what you or I could go and get a loan for. And then, uh, what else? You wanna talk?
Well, you had talked about a little bit.
Oh, yeah, rental, rental, potential rental. So the other thing was if if after sixty days, let's just say, a a unit doesn't sell and it's built. And or we had it under contract and someone drops out that we're negotiating, we're trying to figure this out right now, what, how this would work. But in sixty days after we got CO, we would rent it. We would put on the market to rent. And we just need to figure out how the AMI would work on the rental and and how it could pay the mortgage.
I know it sounds ima- unimaginable that, you know, someone like this wouldn't sell in this kind of market.
It is imaginable, yeah, and I don't want to go down with the ship, so.
But you know, as you get more into the schedule and, you know, figure out what the density should be, um, looking at the timing of how units are released would be something that's really important to how it's phased out with the construction. Um, and Jean has brought that up in the groups before of, like, the number of units you'd you'd release at a time would be directly related to the market at the time, the financing available through HUD and all of those things.
Yeah, and I can chime in a little bit, Jay, because I've got some experience at Smith Ranch. So there's phase six, twenty-seven units over there. We've had a couple fall out of contract because of the high interest rates. And currently, there's a pretty significant backlog of folks that are in a housing crunch. So we've been able to replace those contracts. I think the town's looked at, you know, you you've got other options as far as, you know, maybe the town has a bigger subsidy to try and make sure that the deal gets closed. You know, certainly phasing of the construction to make sure there's not too much exposure. You know, and depending on how quickly the, you know, I don't know if you're a nine month build or six months or twelve or. But yeah, there's some, I'm, you know, with thirty years of experience and I'm I'm sure there's some creative things there to to mitigate the risk that can be done to just kind of, because it's it's tricky right now, right? And it's maybe gonna get worse, so.
You know, one of the things that was in the pack, it was, um, you know, trying to offset some of that risk by having deposits put down or with that. If, you know, and I I just speak anecdotally from what I understand from my team and people that are looking into getting into their first house, they don't have money to put down as a deposit and still paying rent. Like, if they can't put money down unless they're living there. How does that work where someone would be able to secure or put like a, you know, reserve a unit ahead of time if it's not gonna be built for twelve months?
That's what their bosses for, Jay.
Right, I think that, uh, I think the, you know, it could be a very small number. It's just for the bank, basically, because the bank wants to see us under contract, given the financial climate right now as well, interest rates.
And one thing that the housing team has dove into, um, that we're we're gonna going to continue to explore, that Suzanne touched on is the HUD financing. So if we are able to, before we break ground, get the de restriction put together and the restrictive covenant, we can then take that to HUD and that would allow people to get USDA loans where they can finance a hundred percent of it, or they that'll knock down their rate a couple points. And then the other option that we mentioned with with grants a little bit was that the conversation I had was a very positive conversation regarding a three million dollar grant for this. So the more grants that we can secure for this project, potentially, as our subsidy as the town goes down, we'd be able to buy those units down if we needed to um, in order to make those more affordable.
When we were building Valley Brook in two thousand nine, I do remember we had the same conversation about the economy. And, um, you know, we did forge forward with Valley Brook. And as we were breaking ground, there was a lot of pushback and concern about whether those units would be absorbed. Um, you know, as we built them and, um, you know, our first opportunity for people to acquire those units, you know, there was a line out the door at the Housing Authority of people that were ready and willing and had been waiting to buy. So, you know, timing, um, you know, you just never know, but you like to hit it. And, um, you know, I I see this one coming online late twenty twenty-four.
Jean says yes.
Yeah, so, you know, what's gonna happen between now and then? But I mean, we have to be optimistic, there's gonna be the demand and there's gonna be the buyers. There's not a lot of units, given the number of calls we get daily from people looking for housing for this missing middle. So, I mean, I think Valley Brook was a good lesson for us.
And with the net zero initiative, I think that's that's a really important factor that, you know, sometimes that we don't always capture in in even the buy down program, of how much those utilities are gonna cost. And everyone in this neighborhood is really sitting in at an advantage with those utility costs as as Jean went through on that savings as well.
Carol?
I have a little bit of a heartache because our land is one of our most valuable assets. And by following this smaller approach, are we ruling out any potential phase two? So I'm, I think the team is incredible, the green goals are exactly what this community wants to achieve. But to back up a little bit from a strategic standpoint, I don't want this just to be an opportunity. We know we need this housing stock, but are we doing as much as we need? I live in a three bedroom duplex, I'm gonna be there for decades. It is an amazing home base for community members to grow and stay into. There's no question that we need this stock. I want to make sure we're doing it as strategically as possible and looking holistically. And part of my concerns might be because I haven't intimately been been involved in the discussions that the Housing Committee has. So I do have reservations at this point.
Jeffrey? I'm with Carol. There's there's a lot of, a lot of things to feel good about. You know, I'm not, I wouldn't, I'm not gonna kick it to the curb. But I I would like to consider it and think about it. If we did do concept one, for sure. Um, I'd like to find out what type of grants we can get and go from there. I mean, obviously, we're not gonna pull the trigger tonight, but, uh, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to have them to have some time to think about this and maybe talk to, talk to more to Todd and Dick and, you know, staff. Seems like, seems like everyone is just, has a love affair with it, so I'm sure they'll, they'll be getting a hard sell in any way I talk to. But, uh, yeah, yeah, I I I do, and I do also worry about just so much impact, so much program in, uh, in that area with the Lincoln Park, with Wellington, with Gibson Heights, you know, yada yada, all that area. It just seems like we're putting, you know, and and I know it's essentially located and I know all the the good things about it. But also, it's, um, yeah, I I worry how that will affect the people that already live in the in the hood, in Whoville. So, oh, yeah. Todd, anything to add or Dick?
No, just that I'm in favor. I like the idea of doing some more master planning, taking a little broader, greater look and.
So we did do that. Yeah, we did do that. I can speak to that if you want.
Can you just speak to at least, like, is anything we're doing here precluding a phase two?
No, so and I've even like gone as far as the sewer to make sure that there could be a phase two. We didn't bring it up because we heard there might be pushback about that. But I'm just gonna talk about it because you guys are asking the question. So, um, basically where the power line comes in, um, there is access there. And keep in mind, um, where we're showing the housing right now, phase one, as I would call it, is ten to fifteen feet higher than where it says proposed Staples Village. So it's it's a totally different elevation. So really, you'd want to come in on that lower set, lower area and and build that separately anyway. I know everyone who who responded to the RFP just like nuked the site and and and, you know, said, oh, the roads are going all the way through. Well, this actually makes a lot more sense financially, um, phasing wise, et cetera. So, um, I think it's a smart way to go, really, after really studying the site.
And we did set this up in a way where if you need, like, there's a, there's a gap at the end of this alley for a reason. If you needed to create a connection to a lower level, you could grade that down. It would be need to make maintain, you know, take care of that grade change. But if you leave that open, there is a possibility for a connection through it that would be needed.
Can you guys talk about what the community building is? What you see in that space?
We have that focus on composting, recycling, um, so it's really for those types of services.
It's currently the composting and it's just composting down there right now? Yeah, and glass recycling is below the police station or police impound lot.
Yeah, I, um, I I know that the pump track is right there and that's probably what you guys were trying to plan around. I just, um, am worried about if you put something that all the people in Lincoln Park also want to come into that neighborhood. I think that's a big mistake. We don't really want to encourage people driving into that. So it, you know, it should at least be on the corner, which seems like a wasted lot, so I'm not really sure.
That's a, that's a really good comment.
I have a love affair with this, obviously, because I love the Wellington and Lincoln Park. And I think we should do as much of that everywhere that we can. I am concerned about, we just have, you know, we have Bridge Street, Wolf Lion, all these straight, long streets, and now we're gonna add Stables Drive to that. Um, so any traffic calming that you guys can incorporate, I know it's already existing. But, um, with the pump track right above this, it's just, it's a very, people go very fast up this road as they do in other neighborhood streets. So if you could help us out with that, um, I think the horseshoe loop is super brilliant for that same reason. You know, having it on the curve is just really, really good idea. I don't know, uh, I'm excited about the number of units in here and I'm definitely with Jay on as many three bedrooms as possible. It seems like I did some square footage calc, it seems like these are reasonably sized. I'm not a hundred percent sure what the square footage on these are. But I do think that the three bedroom is what our community, what our, I don't know if we're really calling that the missing middle, but, um, I think that's what our community wants is the three bedroom. I think that's a real, you know, a real place where you can stay. I think the two bedroom people grow out of pretty quickly. Um, I don't know the situation of the townhomes. I would love for Lori to, um, you know, if she, if Lori thinks this set of townhomes is a good idea, then I support it. I'm not as familiar with the townhomes and how many people are, you know, lining up to get into those. And if when you have like those those middle, middle units, if that's still a good living experience. I know when I lived in a duplex in Wellington, part of the beauty of the duplexes in Wellington is that they completely don't face each other, so you never feel like you're in the same unit, which is really awesome. So these will be a little bit different that way. But, um, I know that the, you know, the sound and structure and with the garages close to each other and the porches on the outside, they'll try to, they'll do their best. But the townhomes is the only thing, and that parking behind the townhomes, you know, is like, it looks like you back into a space and then you back out. It just seems, um, with a neighborhood with this many kids in it and this many people, this, um, parking in the center seems very clunky. I think, I think we should probably retool that. But I'm really excited. Thank you for bringing this to us. And, um, I really, really support the development of the Stables lot because it's such a wonderful place to live. And I absolutely think that the roads and infrastructure up there can handle this many units.
What what is in the subsidy? What does the subsidy include?
Do you, are you asking me or?
Who's getting the subsidy? I want to know what you're getting from.
So twenty-two thousand a door for. So that is including, that's getting us to carbon neutral and hopefully.
Let me back up, does it include lands or any of the?
It's not, that's twenty-two thousand dollars a door.
So there's more to the subsidy.
The fifty thousand dollars a door is a sort of construction subsidy. Um, and then we have a two point five million dollar subsidy for infrastructure, which we're estimating is five point seven or something right now.
The total seven includes some of that for infrastructure, Eric. And then it also includes the cost per door for carbon neutral and for.
Okay, I'd like to know in the end what the actual subsidy is. No, no, I want to know what the subsidy is for real, for everything that the town is giving, land. I mean, the two point five is part of the infrastructure, but not all of it. I mean, I get, we we do this all the time where we never truly say what, because in the end, the bigger that infrastructure cost becomes, the smaller the differences between the the least, less units and the and more units. Because there's still more that's gotta be absorbed by everything. So I really do want to know what that, what the true subsidy is. I I think that's important. We we do this dance all the time. And before we go farther, I really do need to.
So you're looking for like an assessed value of the land?
Just want a rough guess by the staff, it doesn't have to be assessed. But thi- this is different than something that we would do alone, where we just say, yeah, well, the land's part of it. This is with a partner, so I think it's important that the council knows exactly what, and feed waivers, which will, I'm assuming, be water and, you know, we, I think we just need to know those things. Um, I am not a fan of of how dense this is. I would be maybe better if we went to the eight point one or eight point four UPA, so and matched the neighborhood next door. I know there is a crisis, but I I've said this before, it can't always be everything just because we need units. There's gotta be a livability issue, not just for the people that are gonna live here, but the people that live next door in Lincoln Park and Wellington and have lived there for a long time. And you're still putting a bunch of people there. So we've got to, we've got to honor the fact that people next door aren't gonna like this. So we need to make sure that it is the best. I actually like the the forty unit mix better, but I know that's not gonna go anywhere. You need to make sure on the backside of this. So I spent a lot of time walking through your proposed Staples Village or riding my bike through. That's gonna be a honestly fairly terrible view for the people. That's gonna be a honestly fairly terrible view for the people that are on the, on the backside of that loop. You've, there's, we've got to do something there. I don't know what it is. I don't know how close you've backed up to the, to the edge there. But we've either got to overplant that thing or overshrub it maybe. Because right below it, especially in the spring when the snow melts, it's just a garbage pit and it is for a while. So we need to make sure that, because you're going to be getting calls about that and James is not going to be psyched about those calls. So I think that's important. I, I, I'm not going to wail on, on overprogramming this because it seems like everybody really likes it. I don't like doing anything past this. Just, there's already plenty of people that live on this end of the community and I. I'm just not, I'm not, this is too much for me already. I'm not into going to propose Staples Village. So I'll say my piece with that. This is a fairly big subsidy from town, Lori. I want to make sure we get the deed restriction. I don't like the fact that it's the same, same, similar to what we allow in the Wellington. I, I think we need something different. I ca, I don't like just an appreciation cap on this. I, I think we're going to get into some of the same sort of arguments we have with. I, I want to solve everything beforehand. I want to solve the twenty years from now, who's painting my house? What do you do about, you know, especially with the duplex thing, who's painting one half of the house, who's painting the other? I think we need all of this. We got to look down the road on this thing because of what we're doing and, you know. We constantly um, seem to come back to some of these things. I mean, I know Wellington, we didn't have any idea what we were doing. We've learned a lot since then. I would like this to be as bulletproof in twenty years for that council as possible. Cover everything. Keep them affordable. How are they going to get repainted? What are you going to do about appliances in twenty-five years? What, you know, all these things that we talk about today that we have really no great answer for and we invent answers, I would like those answered. Before we begin. And with that, we'll see how, see how it goes. I, I, yeah. I don't like a whole duplex neighborhood, but. You do, so I guess I lose again.
Well, we're going to look at some other drawings.
Come back to us with more single family.
Put a lot of work and effort into moving forward and we needed to make sure, I mean, it's clearly that the majority of people say, yes, let's, let's move on with this project and move forward. Exactly what it's going to look like or what that mix is going to be, we'll still figure that out. And there's a lot of work to do on all these things uh, that we, we, you know, so we want to start tomorrow. Uh, tackling these things, knowing that the project will be moving forward, so.
First steps will be amending the lugs, um, because right now this is, I think, land use district one and land use district five or fifteen. Um, that allows one unit for twenty acres. It allows that density, but it also allows affordable housing, so. So that'll be probably the first step.
Yeah, we're going to come in and create a new lug for that.
Like we did for Wellington and all of our deed restricted neighborhoods, almost all of them have a specific lug that we had to create. That'll be one of the first steps once we get, and we, we intend to come back with the revisions to the layout. Um, with some singles and see what that does for our subsidy. So our goal was to come back to you guys in about a month or so with a update in terms of what it's looking like, but to move forward. With the um, option two and just some revisions.
Will the single family units have um, a carriage house?
Or a, or a ADU or something above, yeah. Could be a home office or could be a residential unit.
And we want to talk about how we're going to communicate with the current neighborhood. Because we know there's, will be questions and concerns.
Uh, thank you. All right, De novo hearing procedures. Any uh? Thing to add? From you?
I think you know the drill, so.
Anybody have any questions on De novo for tonight? Okay, uh, twenty twenty-three budget update.
Again, um, so I drafted a memo just to kind of summarize our October meeting we had or the budget hearing or the retreat. Just going through the assumptions we made and some of the capital assumptions and I don't know if there's any questions on the memo or not. Um, and then page two. Went into more detailed changes that have happened since October eleventh. So I've summarized these changes um, based upon discussions we've had. Um, I'm saving housing for the last. But basically some minor changes for childcare, getting a grant within parking and transportation. Correcting EV charges, um, special projects, we corrected capital reserves and reduced the Breckenridge history. Net twelve thousand five hundred dollar change. Open space, we eliminated the reserves that we had in there. We talked about that. Um, excise is impacted by housing, so we'll kind of save that until we get to housing. And capital, we made some updates for block eleven. Um, and we neutralized, um, if you will, the impact to the capital fund from the transfer from excise to offset that. Um, and then the general fund, we did some additional payroll balance sheet reconciliations from the past. Which impacted our, our numbers. So that's all in our current budget. The next page is really just a summary of where we were with the retreat and where we are today with the updated budget. Um, and I'm not going to go through all these fund changes right now. But I will talk about when we look at the governmental and proprietary fund balance roll forwards, which. We ended our discussion on back on October eleventh. The main thing really is the impact that we're going to have to our excise. Fund, which is around a ten point eight million decrease if we do the loan for the housing fund. Okay, so that takes our discretionary fund balance down to about thirteen point five million. So that's kind of at a high level, what we're looking at right now, based upon the budget as we have. Um, the last page to go through is really kind of a reconciliation of the different things that we've done in between the funds. Um, more of a spreadsheet view of the words that were in the page two of the memo. But really the focus is housing. That's really, we had three, probably three meetings with housing over the last few weeks. And trying to get our arms around where are we right now versus what the October budget submission had in it. And there are some changes that we made. And one of the biggest changes is CMC. So CMC, we had that as a COP before. Which in a financial perspective creates debt, right? So um, in this case, we eliminated the COP for the CMC project. And it's now a six million dollar investment in the budget. So that is a negative impact to the twenty twenty-three budget for housing. Uh, Stillson, we scaled it back. So we, we do have dollars in twenty-three for Stillson. But we did reduce it by three million from what we had in the budget before, based upon the current scope of the project. The lodge, water and sewer, basically there's capital that's going to be required to improve that in twenty twenty-three. We didn't have that when we did the budget a month ago. So that's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar impact to the, to the budget as an outflow. One of the things that we looked at was our construction costs for Alta Verdi. So we made updates for those for Alta Verdi one and two versus what we had before. Really Alta Verdi one was more twenty twenty-two projections. We updated that. And then um, we made a change really with how we were accounting for the lodge in Washington. We had those really as based in assets held for sale, but if we're really not going to sell the properties, we expensed them, got rid of the restriction, then that of that zero. Um, and then the biggest thing really is our buy downs. So we had, we went through all of our units based upon what's happening today with the sale. What we sold, what we can sell between now and December of this year, uh, looking at existing inventory of buy downs that we need to move in twenty twenty-three. And so we looked at um, moving the inventory we have now. And making those adjustments to what was in the original budget for buy downs, if you will. And those are the dollars that you see there. And then we also included a projected churn of new buy downs in twenty-three. So we put in ten units above the inventory we have today to sell in twenty-three. And we projected we would lose about two hundred and fifty thousand a unit as an estimate. And Lori's looked at, those would probably be more homes, not necessarily the condos from that perspective. So two and a half million is impacting the budget in that perspective as well. The restriction got better at the end of twenty-three because we're assuming we're going to move all of our inventory. And we're going to churn the ten that we'll buy in twenty-three, which leaves us three units, basically, that we, the town wants to keep. And those three units are going to be part of the ongoing restriction for buy downs. But it impact, it's favorable because we had a higher restriction when we did the budget before. So if you look at all, all these different changes, um, the fund balance we started with was a negative six point six million. Based upon the changes we have in our current budget proposal, we need about fourteen million dollars to break even in housing. And that would be a loan from the excise fund. And so that is now in the budget, which is part of the reduction in the excise fund. Um, so we would initiate a five-year, probably a five-year loan. We're going to do a five-year plan with Lori. Before the end of the year, just to see what we're looking at with other projects and what do we have, do we have a problem in twenty-four kind of a thing? And so, but that's, that's where we are today in the proposed budget. Um, we don't have a loan payment, if you will, in twenty twenty-three for housing to make back to the excise fund. We would anticipate that would start in twenty twenty-four. So the major projects we have are CMC, Stillson and the Justice Center. So the Justice Center is a, it's a COP, so it really, it's, it's a wash, if you will. Now, we had Justice Centers as COP a month ago. We have it and there's a COP today. So it's, those are the three big projects outside of buy downs and housing helps.
If I could add why we budget this amount of money that, I mean, we, the actual transfer would occur towards the end of uh, twenty twenty-three. So if we're successful in getting grant dollars to help offset sewer costs for the lodge, you know. Uh, or something like that, then that's just that much less money that we have to ultimately transfer. But this kind of based on what we know today, what we're doing, this is the number that we would need if we're, if we get grants that just helps us down the road.
We didn't put any grant upside in this number. We took a, a view as if we have it, we have it. If we don't, it's not a.
See, it's not a done deal yet either. I mean, while we've made progress, it's still not done and uh, you know, so.
Rick, it's no secret that I'm not a fan of the CMC uh.
Yeah, I'm not either.
Project, but um, is there a point where enough time elapses between the one that's being built now for CMC? And this one between uh, the town and the county where it's not worth it because the prices go up because they can't. The economy of scale disappears since the, the new one.
That's, yeah, and that's, my fear is have we reached that point? But we don't know that yet because we haven't gotten the pricing yet, because we haven't got, you know, come to terms on a contract. So uh, I mean, the real deal points that were critical for us, I feel like we've worked through the majority of those. You know, um, Kirsten has been working really hard with the county attorney and they really, you know, with the goal of trying to make this thing work. Uh, you know, it's, we're not getting the level of cooperation or communication that you would hope to see with CMC on some of this. I mean, we are, but it's kind of like through a third party type stuff. So it's very frustrating. I can tell you that uh, a lot of us have lost our desire for this project considerably. I could walk from this thing now and be happy. I don't think it's that great a deal for the town and what we're getting. I am twenty times more excited about Stillson and what it does for our community and what CMC is doing. But I kind of feel like we've, the only reason I haven't really suggested that, even though I'm saying it out loud. It's just because I think there's this kind of partnership commitment and yeah, CMC is excited and about it, but. Why not? We're building a building. Eventually they get to own, you know, so.
But do you think we should talk to the county? Or I mean, I guess I, like, I guess I feel the same way you do. And then when I saw how close they were building it to our Blue Fifty-two and the other neighborhood homes, I was really bummed. So like, are we at a point where we really could have a discussion about doing something else someplace else?
I mean, it's a big number, fourteen million to go in. I mean, we're doing a lot. We're up, we're doing a lot of upfront stuff, right? We're putting a. I mean, to me, we're talking about spinning our half. This is a, it's twelve and the way everything's going, you know, the thing, you know, there's going to be fourteen million, you know? And uh, because, and we're getting a handful of rental units. My God, we're building two hundred and fifty rental units right now. We really need another twenty-five, thirty. Yeah, we could always use them, but at this dollar amount, I'm not sure. I don't know either, but I feel like there, I feel like if, if we feel that way, we need a strategy and we need to talk with uh, a few people at the county. I, I think staff is kind of a, county staff's probably aligned with us. Uh, some of the frustration and that, but um, obviously there's some. I think a BOCC that would need some communication.
I think we should communicate. I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I feel like I'm, I'm the first to be like, we need more housing and I'm a hundred percent agree with you and Rick and it's like. The, the, the return in my mind on this investment is, is making less sense by the day. My two cents.
What do you think?
Well, so for me, um, the most complex tracking transactions I've worked on has been a, you know, lawyers solving, resolving together. And I haven't had that access on this deal. Um, so what is difficult is I'm, if I don't understand what their concerns are, I can't help address them. Uh, and as you know, we've got um, a really important deed, deed restriction already that has a lot of protection for that land. Um, but if there are conversations, I think it would help to have the two lawyers, myself and Keely. Meet as well to explain the legal issues the best we can so that it isn't like the lawyers are interfering. There's, it's more complicated than that.
But I'm not sure it's really the, the legal issues are just another thing that's, that's creating a, a barrier for us. Because we can, the chances are we can work through the legal issues, really. It's not about working through the, it's about, do we have the energy and desire to continue to work through it? And is it worth the effort in light of our financial situation? Does, because if it, I mean, we'll do whatever we got to do to make something happen if it, the outcome is there. But I'm not excited about the outcome. I, I'm not sure it's a great deal for us and.
Get more expensive, but it's not on our terms. They, they won't do any sort of energy savings whatsoever. They won't give the storage that we require by our code. Not even close. They don't even give half the storage per unit. It's just, you know, it's a take it or leave it deal that. I'm in favor of leaving.
That aside, I understood about half of what you said, Dave. Should we be scared? I mean, is, are we, I do, you know, I mean, are, are we spending above our means? I mean, is, are we, do, you know, I mean, are, are we spending above our means?
No, I mean, if I look at the new budgets, one hundred and twenty-six million in revenue, about a hundred and forty-five million of expense. That's a net loss of nineteen, which is okay. We're spending more than the revenue we're taking in, in two thousand and twenty-three. Most of that's being driven by the Justice Center because that's a COP. So we're going to spend it, but we're going to get the cash back, if you will. So our cash flow roughly is around negative three million in two thousand and twenty-three as it stands in this current budget. So I would say we should do a five-year view. You know, we're, it's, so I can't really answer your question. I, we need to look five years out for really all the funds is what I would do. But housing first and see, you know, what is, what are we doing? Do we, or will we compound our loan, if you will, in the out years? Because we don't have a lot left after restrictions. We've got a lot restricted, but you know, our general funds, a million bucks or so after restrictions. And, you know, we've got a lot in the capital, right? Restrictions as, as well, forty-eight million in restrictions for capital plus another twenty-something million in twenty-three. So I think we just look at all that, build it in and see what it looks like. And so.
Be much more strategic on our buy downs in, in today's market. Yeah, we, we're not going to be going and grabbing one and two bedroom condos with five hundred dollar HOAs. Those aren't selling. We're going to buy, we're going to buy, you know, if, if French Creek units pop up that we know, you know, that those are good to move. Those kind of things we want to look at, you know, the, the three bedroom or the town home type units still are more attractive to some people. And so that's, that's what we've got to do to be much smarter in this environment about what we're doing. And honestly, I think we just have to come to the realization that we, there are things we're going to do. And, and the cost of building rental is always going to cost us a lot more than it costs us to build a for-sale unit. Right. Our subsidy on these for-sale units would be, I mean, even when you look at the cost per unit is, is half of what, if, not counting land. But it's half of what we're paying to subsidize some of these buy downs out there. And we're getting brand new units with garages and we need to, yeah. And so I, I think our four rent units we're about done with anyways. So we really got, we've got Stillson, we, and we really got Block eleven to really be concentrating on in the future. And that's not going to hit our pocketbook the same as what we've been doing these first couple of years here.
Yeah.
So. I, I mean, the more of the, the more that we study this budget, yeah. I, I'm concerned how far down the road we already are with CMC because I, I think the writing's on the wall. With that project. Because that would, that would help things tremendously. Well, I think if you, I mean, Lori and I talked about it and we feel the same.
Oh, yeah.
And for Lori to say that, it's lost its.
Pretty serious.
Good rental and we're bringing so many rental units on right now that are going to be great.
I mean, the amount of.
That was always a sort of iffy rental.
Sooner than later and, and not, we don't need to point fingers to anybody, but we have to get, we gotta sit down and somebody's got to have a, we need to have a conversation. And I'll probably need help from the two of you.
Let's set that up, I'm, I mean, Kelly and I can do that.
So if that project goes away, we don't.
In good faith, we cannot continue down this road. This project is obviously a dog. There is no reason for us to continue. I mean, I didn't really have much of an opinion on this other than I wasn't, you know, whatever. But it really sounds like this deal has gotten worse and it is time for us to jump ship.
It has gotten worse and it's just going to get more expensive.
So fourteen, is it eighteen or fourteen?
The loan is fourteen.
All right, well, let's continue to talk.
Six off of it if we don't do CMC. And the loan is fourteen and, but if we don't do CMC, that takes six off of that. The loan's only eight. It's a huge, I would sleep better at night.
Yeah, let us follow up and talk to the county on this before we.
Community leadership board, anybody have any problems with this?
Problems with it, it's fantastic.
Told her and she was super psyched. She was completely shocked, so. Are we having an exact session?
You're very serious, it makes me a little nervous.
It's all right, it's okay. All right, we good?
Yeah, oh, we, yeah, we don't have an exact session, so. We should knock off some reports.
Oh, yeah, because we have a. That's right. Town manager and staff, what do you got?
Nothing.
Nothing. Cast and MMC, we didn't have one, but we did.
I went to one.
Oh, you did?
Spent the whole time talking about, there, there is some desire to look at micro transit. You know, by Frisco, to their credit, is really trying to look at how they can get people out of cars. And, you know, it takes investment and they, as they say, they don't have money for transit. I mean, what I said was, you know, is there a way to look at it, a re, look at the summit stage and, and less routes and more just point to point? And does that free up a lot of dollars that could help offset micro transit? That could benefit everybody, including Breckenridge on some stuff. So long ways to go. How was it, that wasn't very well received? No, I mean, you know, I think people, they're going to go back and talk about, is it worth even studying to a certain degree? But I mean, there's a, there's a significant cost associated with micro transit, as we know, just from our stuff. But it, so they, you know, you're not going to get it, certainly, I think everybody knows. And to Elizabeth's credit, at that meeting, she said there's a parity issue with Breckenridge. And so, you know, to expect that same model to just fund more transit for other communities is probably not going to go over very well.
I already told Rick, I'm, it's not going over well with me right now, we haven't even talked about it. Just from the way this whole thing has developed over the years, we have gotten the, the short end of the stick on transit, so. Have a great trip with Lori down to fading west's plant.
Oh, cool.
It was amazing and Polus was there, which was very cool. So Kelly and I went with Lori and it was awesome.
Lori was a great tour guide.
She was, we, we drove around, it was very cool, so. Open space?
We go to a meeting.
Tourism?
We did have a meeting.
All drugged up.
Do you remember what happened?
No, it was right before my surgery, so, but then I got all drugged up. You know, I, I apologize, I, I did not take a lot of, I mean, I've got some notes I did not prepare for, talking about.
You don't have to apologize for that, we're done with that. History?
We have not had a meeting.
Creative arts?
I, I went for, and it was my first creative arts meeting and it was. I actually took a lot of notes because it was, it was a little eye opening in the fact that, you know, they're really going to spend the next three or four months with leadership planning. They've had ten of the thirteen directors are brand new. And so tomorrow's really got our work cut out for, in trying to set expectations. And they're, they're moving to, you know, with all their events of deepening the impact. So maybe the visibility is, is less, but so is the risk. And it really focuses around community involvement versus like being out there and, you know, big ostentatious things. It's maybe more kind of geared to our residents and the people that live and work here. I think they are moving the ticket office or have from the Riverwalk to Old Masonic Hall, which, you know, kind of goes opposite of decreasing the visibility. But it, it allows, allows to have some visibility for some of those, you know, deepening impacted events. You know, they, they're really focusing on a move from a producing organization to a presenting organization, which I thought was interesting. The fact that they're going to be kind of facilitating events versus producing themselves. And they're doing a big Brett Create Refresh, their logos might be in all caps now versus a mixture of those. They really want to.
Were you the only weightlifter in the room?
Wait, I'm not done though, this is like, there's, I am, I am. Biffa is getting a makeover, so it's not, you know, it's going to be no longer the Biffa and using festival. It's going to be an art boom. Boom. And so this is, this is like, it's going to be spectacular and boom, it's in bombing and avalanche and like, and all that. And then they get a new website, which is long overdue and it's like a lot of circles and arrows and labeling systems. And that's, that's great and this brand.
I have seen a whole different side of him.
So. And the new website is going to be rolled out in February and, and I am very excited to see it because I think it's going to be great. Fantastic meeting.
Yes, with the Old Masonic Lodge for the ticketing, I mean, that should bring a lot of opportunity for the partner. I mean, they're going to really feature the partner organizations there as well, correct?
That, that's, that's what I'm understanding, yes.
I mean, I think that'll be, I personally think that's.
Where, where do you get your ticket?
I, I guess you.
When you walk in, is it right there or do you have to go in the?
No, yeah, it's right there.
It's right there.
The Lamortes going on, so I didn't, I couldn't tell where it was, but.
There behind the door.
It's the storefront.
Yep.
Main Street storefront right there.
Wow.
I think, you know, registering for those classes and for events, everything will be a little bit easier. They'll have some walking trust.
It's our most visible spot in the town.
I don't know how people are going to know to go in there.
The level of enthusiasm just went really high in this room. It was incredible. It's cool.
Bring it back up, right?
Cry like you did at your first childcare meeting?
There was no tears, which is great, yeah.
Let's work, events?
Back to me. I, I don't, I don't want to let Jay help through me like that. So the, the Christmas, New Year, I mean, Christmas falling on Sunday is clearly going to change the reservation. We keep hearing that, okay? But we talked a lot about it, what we can do about it, et cetera, et cetera. But clearly it's going to push it back into January a week. So, and I think we've all heard that enough. The Lucy with Julia went to a dark sky initiative event or, or seminar. And Lucy seems very excited about it. And there's some, some certifications around dark sky that Lucy's going to apply for a grant for mentor help to, to try to get closer to those certifications. So, you know, Lucy's kind of, you know, wearing the community hat to, and the management hat to, to, to go towards that, which I think was really exciting.
You going to say something, Rick?
Well, we want to come back and talk to the, some of those deadlines, that deadline for applying for that grant to help you with those free hours of work for certification is, is tomorrow.
Oh, you're kidding?
Yeah, and we're, we're not sure that's the best strategy today. And we wanted to have more of a work session with you all to see how far, there are some, this actually came up at, at Mayor's Managers. And there's, it's being pushed in Blue River too. And there, there are some mechanisms on this certification stuff that really kind of talk about how you're policing and reporting violations and turning your neighbors in and doing a lot of stuff that really turns a lot of people off on some things. And I don't know all about it, but I just think we need to really understand. Because it wasn't that long ago, remember, a neighborhood came in and said they wanted to extend their. And we all said, that's fine, you can use them for a while longer because we didn't want to trash a bunch of outside fixtures. And almost all of our town fixtures could, would probably have to go away.
Well, not go, not go away.
Will be redone.
Right, we would have to make.
Just the fact that Lucy is excited about diving into this. What we want to talk about as a group before we're jumping out and, and seeing at what level are we comfortable starting? Because the concept is good, but at what level do we start getting into it and that? So we kind of set up expectations.
I just don't want to keep losing ground on dark sky because I feel like the change over the last ten years here has been pretty significant in the amount of light, just ambient light at night. And I feel like every, it's fine if we're not making everybody replace all their lights like right now, but we can't keep getting worse and worse.
And those are the things we want to hear from you as a group and talk about where, how do you want to approach this and what? Because there may be steps that you want to take that don't involve certification because certification may.
Muddy the water.
Things that you're not, we're not ready to do or want to do right now, I don't know yet, yeah. Well, the discussion has begun, right? So, which is great. And then we recapped Oktoberfest at a little higher, higher level of detail. And she had some of her survey results back. We, we, you know, based on survey results, we saw a higher income demographic this year. Businesses seemed happier this year than in two thousand and nineteen. Businesses reported sales were up this year compared to two thousand and nineteen. And the respondents felt there was a high marketing benefit to the event. And then it was also reported out of state bookings are up, which is great. And snow sculpture, we've got our twelve themes already and that event looks to be charging forward.
Cool.
With full teams.
Do you know why there's apprehension of looking at moving snow sculptures like outside of the core?
We, we looked at that day a few years ago and did a study and had a committee, subcommittee, you know, when we were about to build the structure and we knew we would need Tiger Dredge Parking when we lost, you know, South Gunland. And we formed a committee and we looked at it, this was back when I was still on the events committee. And there, there were just no viable, really no real viable locations that, that the group felt. All of them had real challenges and, and.
Different reasons.
Yeah, but all the, all the, you know, and I was on the board of BTO at the time and all of them were still in the core of town. It was Ridge Street or along.
Ice Rink and we looked out and on Airport and so we, we did look at some perimeter stuff.
They all had some problem with them that made it really difficult. Whether it was electricity or how Public Works could move the heavy equipment around, there was a bunch of.
Yeah, it was stuff that, I mean, I thought it was pretty well vetted.
It was really well vetted.
Okay.
The whole thing, just the whole thing. Did a good job vetting it at the time, so.
Yeah, so I did have some notes.
Good, nice job. Nice job, events, anything to add?
The only thing I'd add is that John Dor has been attending the events committee for a long time, but he's sort of stepping up into the staff member role. And he's been awesome in a number of ways, but it's a good, I think a really great step for him and the events committee, so.
Jay, you got anything for childcare?
We did not have a meeting.
Anything to add on housing?
He was ready though.
I was here, I was, I was here sitting all by myself.
Rent increases at, I think it was Huron Heights, Pinewood Two and Coto Flats, P and L's on those all look great. Got some work to do on buy downs here to make sure we're moving some of those units. So we'll be working with Lori to, to make sure we're getting some of that cash back, but.
It's great having Todd on board in that, from that respect.
Thanks. And yeah, staff is. Staff just crushes us. So yeah, big thanks to Lori and Cory and Melanie, that the amount of work those three are able to crank out is phenomenal and really important to the town, so. Good work.
Lori has put together a hell of a team.
Yeah, cool. And equity, social equity. Okay, let's go have dinner and come back for hopefully a quick meeting followed by a quick call up. I'm going to call to order the Town Council for the town of Breckenridge. Regular meeting is November 8th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Roll call please.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron. Ms. Sade. Mr. Beckerman.
President.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Minutes for October 25th, 2022. Anybody have a problem? Then it stands as presented agenda, Rick.
No changes.
And it stands as presented. We've communications council. We start with public. Wish to comment? Three minute time limit and non-agenda items only, please. And with that, I close public comment. We move to the Breckenridge Ski Resort update. Hi, Jody.
Hi, everyone. So good to see you all. I'm going to first just say, did you not pay the heating bill? Cause it's very cold in here.
She's been complaining all night too.
Deal with that. Just kidding.
Me. So this is, we're starting to make cuts.
I'm going to just apologize. I've had a helmet on all day, sunscreen. We just are trying to get a ski resort open here. So yeah, that's the big news. We're opening tomorrow. I'm pretty excited. This is the first early opening we've had since 2018. And really good snowmaking conditions as you can all see around and that fresh snow that we got. I think we're up to about maybe a foot of natural snow. So it looks amazing out there. It's wall to wall. Good skiing. Had a, had our team out there testing the product today, which is not going to lie. It's a good part of the job. So yeah, it's a, it's a big, huge shout out to our snowmaking team. As always, early season systems in great shape, going well. Yeah. And we're going to be celebrating all week. So tomorrow we'll have our opening day celebration. Everybody can come. We'll be handing out waffles in the morning, do our big banner break. And then Thursday, we're going to head into Wake Up Breck and be at all of our coffee shops. Everybody remind, reminded to bring a canned good that will donate to FERC. And yeah, so that's on Thursday. We'll see you all out there helping us hand out our very cool. I don't know if you've seen our mugs this year, but they're the camper style, little tin mugs. They're really cute. So we're going to do that. And then Friday is our big ribbing, cutting and grand opening of our new Rips Ride Chair. Really excited. That's kind of the first phase of our peak eight reimagination. And yeah, it's the first POMA lift to go live this year. We were the first one to get it online and amazingly we hit our target. So everything is in place to have that roll. So we'll have that whole beginner area open on Friday as well. So that's what's coming up for this week. And then Friday again, we'll have music all, each of the mornings, we'll do waffles again on Friday. So hopefully everybody can come out and kind of our purpose for really opening up early is to really focus on our employees and the community, which I'll kind of get into our priorities. But for all purposes, we're going back to what's a normal season. No restrictions, which is really exciting. So you can walk into a restaurant, sit down, have some food. And we'll have, you know, of course, if anybody wants to wear a mask, please do, but really no restrictions on our part. So it feels really good to get back out there and new menu items, full, full service in all of our restaurants. Yeah. So that's exciting. So I wanted to just kind of go over how we put our strategic priorities together for the resort. And, and those really are around our top three core areas that we believe we want to ladder all of our decision making up to. And that is number one, our employees first, making sure that they are, you know, cared for, valued, listened to and, and all of those great things. And the second is our community. And you've all heard me talk at COO breakfast and everywhere else and really trying to, to partner with the community. And I think some of the actions that we've been able to take this year have been pretty, pretty pronounced. Bringing our licensed childcare online. We're very close on that. State has recognized our application. So we hope to have that online early to mid-December. We're fully staffed in that area, which was huge, huge lift and excited about that. In addition to the licensed childcare is the after school care program that we have donated $750,000. And I did speak about it and announce it at the COO breakfast, but I can't put a bigger exclamation point on the fact that we are focused on the community and that $250,000 a year is going in three, over three years to really stand up this program for after school care. And I think the big point there is we're really focused on working parents and making sure that we're able to support parents with kids that, that need a safe place for their kids to go, even when they're infants and all the way through, through school age. I mean, then the third priority that we're focused on is our flow and circulation. And as you know, a lot of our PK reimagination is around that. But it's really like what we saw with the production of the Freedom Super Chair on Peak Seven is just really the data is outstanding of how we're really moving people into underutilized terrain. And so back to our Chair Five installation for what we're proposing and seeking approval for is Chair Five. And that would give us full high speed lifts at all of our base areas to help move people up and get them to that underutilized terrain. So those are our three core priorities. Our employees first, our community and our flow and circulation. So on the community front, we were able to raise $145,000 with our Rips Ride chairlift auction. 50,000 of that is going to Summit Search and Rescue Group. We'll be presenting them a a big check on Friday at our Rips Ride opening. So that's really exciting. The rest of the money we are donating to the Summit Foundation and additionally to our Epic Promise Grant Funds. So that was exciting. Yeah. So skeet a town. We're really encouraging and focusing on our arrivals and departures this year, really putting a focus on how can we better stream people around the resort? We had great success. I talked about it last year that we're tracking data through the tunnel of how many people are actually skiing all the way down into town. And it was a, it was a significant amount of people. So we are seeing, and that just takes the pressure off of the download for the gondola. We've made some adjustments in our maze configuration at the bottom of the gondola for morning upload to really flow people up as quickly as we can as well. So those are a little bit of our, of our focus points. You'll also see we're launching our new brand project and it'll be a slow, slow rollout, but you'll start to see a lot more high five. And the high five really capitalizes on our five peaks. And really just that energy that comes around with a big high five. You know, the tagline at the moment is you don't come to Breckenridge to get away from people. You come to be a part of it all. And so that's our new brand messaging that you'll start to see coming out. Staffing looks really good. We're in good shape. It should feel like normal at the resort, you know? Had a really good, really good progress with applicant inflow and our housing is in great shape. We're full. As you can only imagine. And yeah, we're running buses over to Keystone as well, every single day, because we do have some rooms over there as well. So that's pretty much what's going on is additionally with the focus on employees is our $20 minimum wage, which you all know about. But there were other benefits that came along with that $175 million investment in what we're calling our new direction. So alongside of the $20 minimum wage is we also have expanded health benefits and wellness benefits. And that's not just for, the wellness benefits extend beyond just our employees. It's for roommates and family members. So really taking a, a good approach to mental health as well. So those are kind of the big ones. Talked about a little bit about arrivals and departures. We are doing more focused work around how we're bringing people into the community and flowing them out. And so we're utilizing some camera technology and really starting that process of really looking at how we can improve that for all of us. Limited, limiting lift tickets is also something I'm sure all of you have heard us announce. And we're really trying to strike a balance between our pass holders and our date ticket gases as a way to manage the guest experience for everyone. So that's, that's also new this year and pretty exciting. Let's see. That is pretty much every, everything as far as the updates for the resort goes. Yeah. Any questions?
No, just. Lot of nice, good energy. That's great. Yeah.
Thanks. Well.
Tomorrow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thursday. So our apologies.
So we're going to brainstorm a little more childcare and after school and who knows what we'll come up with next.
Great all. Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, I'll look forward to it. So thanks, everyone. Appreciate you guys.
You, Jody.
Yeah.
Warm up.
All right. We move on to continue business. We have the second reading of Council Bill number 34. Series 2022, this in ordinance concerning a for rent workforce housing project. And in connection therewith, authorizing the project, approving conveyance of property, execution and delivery of a deed to site lease, lease purchase agreement and other documents.
Yes, this is the second reading of this ordinance. First reading was on October 25th, and there have been a few changes since first reading. And those changes were driven by a slight increase to the budget and a change in the way that we are going to finance this project with just COPs and no cash. So that changed the amount of the COP. So those changes are reflected in the ordinance that is in your packet and staff does recommend approval as the ordinance presented.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? No, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, how about we pass Council Bill number 34, series 2022, the title which is read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion. In a second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. That's Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
All right. We have first reading of Council Bill number 35, series 2022. This in ordinance setting the mill levy within the town of Breckenridge for 2023. Dave?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for the mill levy for the 2023 budget to have it at 5.07 mills, which will help defray our operating expenses in the general fund for the town. And we're close to about 3.7 million in revenue and the staff recommends approval for this ordinance.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I'm moving past Council Bill number 35, series 2022, the title which is read into the record.
Second. Is motion in a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have the second reading of Council Bill number 36, series 2022. This is a bill for an ordinance repealing policy for a pertaining to mass and making conforming amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steffi Shrek planner two for the record. This is the first reading for basically eliminating policy four, which is the mass bonus. It makes amendments to policy three A, basically all enclosed square footage will count as density. And then in the future, that will be regulated under that policy, under policy three. And then the work session earlier today, there will be minor changes made before the second hearing. And then staff will also work on a future amendment for the market rate carriage houses we talked about for the Wellington and Lincoln Park at a later time. So happy to take questions, but staff recommends this first reading with the changes we'll make before the second reading.
Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? And the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, we pass Council Bill number 36, series 2022, the title which had been read into the record.
Second.
Is motion in a second? Any further discussion?
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a resolution number 20, series 22. It's a resolution to set forth findings of fact and conclusions as to the eligibility of the undeveloped land known as the Entrada Property.
Mayor, council, staff proposes that council approve the resolution of eligibility and the findings of fact and conclusions of law because the criteria and the statute have been met in staff's opinion. This of course does not bind counsel to any future, future actions related to annexation of the property, the proposed development agreement or other approvals related to the property.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I'm moving past resolution number 20, series 2022, a resolution to set forth findings of fact and conclusions as to the eligibility of undeveloped land known as the Entrada Property.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman. Mr. Bergeron. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have public hearing for the 2023 proposed budget and 2023 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan Public Hearing.
Good evening again. Just some highlights about our 2023 budget. Right now, the budget as submitted is 125 million for the town as all fund roll up with a total expense of about 145 million. That's a deficit of about 19 million. Most of that's being driven by the Justice Center project for affordable housing. Even so, our cash flow, we're about 3.2 million negative for the, for the year in 2023. Part of the other items related to the budget are driven cost by personnel increase. So we have 12 new personnel. We're going from 202 to 214. And we also, just with the cost of living, we're going to be about 4.5 million increase from 2022 to 2023 in our budget. Our fund balance, ending fund balance for 2020 will be right around 224 million. After restrictions, it's about 69 million. And on the CEO Capital Improvement Plan, we've got about 14 million in new projects for 2023. About 6.8 million of prior project carryover that we're going to have in 2023. And then future project restrictions for the next three years beyond that of $48 million. So around 69 million for the CIP embedded within this budget.
Those are the highlights I have. Thank you, Dave. Sure. Does Counsel have any question? Anyone in the public have a question or wish to comment on the budget this evening? This is the public hearing. All right. And with that, we will close the public hearing. We, we don't have a vote tonight. All right. Dave, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to Planning Commission decisions. Are there any call ups for the meeting from the first of November? No? All right. Planning Commission decisions stand as presented. We now have the Breckenridge Ski Area Master Sign Plan Novo Hearing. This is a call up hearing with respect to Class C Minor Development Permit, Breckenridge Ski Area, Peak Eight and Mountain Activities Master Sign Plan Application PL 2022 dash zero four three nine. Property that is the subject of the application is located at 1521 Ski Hill Road, Breckenridge, Colorado 80424. Application was originally considered by the Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission, also known as the Planning Commission, in accordance with the procedures and requirements of the Town of Breckenridge Development Code, the Development Code. On October 18th, 2022, the Planning Commission conditionally approved the application. On October 25th, 2022, the Planning Commission's decision on the application was presented to the Town Council by the Director of the Department of Community. is presented to the town council by the Director of the Department of Community Development as required by section nine dash one dash eighteen dash three C four of the Development Code. On October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, the town council voted to call up the planning commission's decision on the application. By calling up the app, the decision, the planning commission's decision is hereby vacated. Pursuant to section nine dash one dash eighteen dash five A one C, the town's development code. This is a de novo hearing, which the town council will make its own decision with respect to the application. Pages two oh two to two fifty nine inclusive, the council's agenda package for this meeting are made a part of the record of these procedures. For the record, the applicant is represented at this hearing by Jim Testan, the Director of Mountain Planning, Bell Resorts, and Elena Scott from Norris Design. The following general procedures will be followed by the council in connection with this hearing. First, Mark Truckee, Cliff Cross and Chris Kulik, the town's Development of Community Development, Department of Community Development, will introduce the application. Applicant will then be given an opportunity to question Mr. Truckee, Cliff Cross and Mr. Kulik about their testimony or records. Next, the applicant will be given an opportunity to present any evidence that it may wish to offer in support of the application. This may involve the calling witnesses or the introduction of documentary evidence. Questioning of the applicant's witnesses by council will be permitted. Then, any member of the public who wants to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application will be permitted to do so. Questioning of the public witnesses by the applicant and council will also be permitted. Finally, staff and the applicant will be given an opportunity to present any further evidence that they desire to offer. Members of the council will be permitted to ask questions of any person who testifies. This will occur after the testimony has been offered and any questioning of the witness by the applicant has occurred. There are further questions that the applicant has. As a result of any council's questions, the applicant will be permitted to ask those questions. After all of the testimony and the questioning of the witnesses has been concluded, the hearing will be closed. Will there be time for town council to discuss this matter and to render its decision? For the record, I want to state that the town attorney, Kirsten Crawford, will not be involved in the presentation of any evidence in this matter and will remain available to advise the town council. We're making a record of this hearing will be necessary for any person who testifies to come to the podium, identify himself or herself for the record, speak slowly and clearly so that the recorder can pick up the testimony. There any questions about the procedures to be followed? It is now time for Mr. Truckee, Mr. Cross and Mr. Kulik to introduce the application.
Chris. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Kulik, planning manager for the record. Tonight, before you have the Breck Ski Area Master Sign Plan, which has really been a long term goal of staff to get implemented, we've been working for years with the ski area to try and get a master sign plan for this business, just due to the complexity. It's really categorically different than any other business in town, just because of the the number of visitors that are there in the in the millions of unique skier visitors every year and just the changing weather conditions and all the different offerings that the ski area has for for guests to enjoy. Cliff Cross will give you a brief, emphasize brief overview of the master sign plan here in a second. But to give a little background and his experience with signage, he is now our primary planner tasked with really all sign related manners. Cliff and Steffi Shrock have kind of spearheaded sign enforcement over the last summer, which I think they've they've had really terrific results, you know, considering we're coming out of the looser restrictions from the pandemic and really trying to get that tidied up. They worked really well with the CSO officers from the police department and established a weekly protocol in of enforcement. But with that, I'll turn it over to Cliff for a brief overview of the master sign plan. And I'll note that myself, Mark Truckee and Cliff will all be available to answer any questions that the council has throughout the hearing.
Thanks, Chris. Hello, Cliff.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. So I have the proposed master sign plan. It's going to serve as the primary document kind of regulating all of the property signage in both winter and summer months. The application before you is just for peak eight and the mountain areas. Kind of due to the complex and large aspect of the resort operations, they are going to submit subsequent applications to the town for peak seven, peak nine and the North Gondola lots. With this application, we have kind of laid out that framework that I discussed. There are two LED signs, two corbel freestanding signs and five variances requested from the town code. So like I said, this is going to be kind of a living document encompassing previously approved as well as the future requirements of the ski resort. The master sign plan is laid out in four different areas. Let's. Perfect. The first area is this on mountain. Oh geez. I'm just going to turn this off. Look at the first is the on mountain area is going to be the red in the map. Turn it off. The largest zone in the primary recreation area. This zone requires safety as well as wayfinding signage for both winter and summer operations. The second is the snow front zone, which is the green on the map. This is the base areas of both peak seven, peak eight and peak nine, generally extending from the paved area of the food and beverage zone out to the base of the chairlifts. The third zone is the Arrival Plaza, which is encompassed of the area directly surrounding the gondola entry and exit points at peak seven, peak eight and North Gondola Lot. That is in the gray. And then the fourth is the food and beverage zone in blue. This is the paved portions of all the base areas and adjacent buildings that include indoor and outdoor dining options. Like Chris said, the operations of the ski resort differ drastically from the operations within town. And staff recognizes that. Due to the signage in the on mountain and snow front zone, they are exempt from the call or from the town code by the Colorado State Ski Safety Act. This type of signage includes kind of trail maps, any trail closure stuff as well as any other safety wayfinding signage within that snow front zone. Beyond the signs that are exempt from our town code, there are five variances or is five design aspects from three different sections of the town code. These five variances are materials, height for freestanding, quantity for freestanding, temporary and movable as well as electronic. Staff finds that for variance number one, due to kind of the changing nature of the mountain, having the material variance will be able to provide more or less signage dynamic in nature as well as the mountain and continue to provide an efficient and effective wayfinding and informational signage for the safety of guests. The second variance is the height restriction. They are requesting a variance from ten feet to twenty feet. This will allow the additional snowpack within the winter months as well as create overhead clearance for any operational activities that mountain staff have to do prior to the mountain open. The third variance is quantity for freestanding signs. In the snow front zone, they are requesting a number of ten freestanding signs. Staff in the commission currently find the existing count of eight signs being electronic signs, trail maps and other permanently installed signs to give information to the guests. They are also requesting an unlimited number of freestanding signs within the on mountain zone. Majority of these signs are going to be exempt due to that Colorado State Ski Safety Act. But further signs are being requested basically to ensure that they have that flexibility to provide an efficient and effective information around the safety on the mountain. The fourth variance is going to be around temporary and movable directional signage. The applicant is requesting temporary and movable signage specifically within the Arrival Plaza, food and beverage and snow front zones. These type of signs are basically provided to lay out the information to the guest and provide efficient and effective signage within kind of on and off loading the gondola lots, meeting up people at the snow front zones for school, ski school, as well as get people on and off the lifts efficiently and effectively. Staff does want to, staff and the commission wants to make it clear that this variance would not be honored for any other advertising signs within the snow front, food and beverage and Arrival Plaza. This is specifically for the informational and wayfinding for safety on the mountain. The last variance is going to be around electronic and LED signs. Previously, the town has approved one electronic sign within that snow front area. Staff. Staff in the commission finds this sign type to be extremely effective within the operations of the mountain due to the ever changing nature of snowpack weather as well as crowd and kind of visitors within that area. So staff and commission supports granting this variance for electronic and signs under this master sign plan. With that, policy twelve of the town code presents a zero point analysis because it is an absolute policy. And with that, planning staff recommends to town council approve the master sign plan.
Thank you, Cliff. Questions for staff? Nope. All right, no questions. Nice, nicely done.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, follow me, questions. Would the applicant like to cross examine Cliff first? I'll take that as a no. The applicant may present its evidence concerning the application.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
Hello again.
Elena Scott with Norris Design. I did bring a blanket this time following Jody's name. But it was mid fifty six, wasn't dressed properly. Anyway, good to see you again. Very much want to say a nice thank you to staff. As Chris mentioned, this is a big undertaking to begin to document all the signage for the ski area. Within town limits, you'll see there's a hundred and sixty eight acres, but three thousand acres of of the ski area are on mountain. And so trying to bring together the signage that happens all across the resort cohesively was a really important thing for us with this process. And really to create that organizational framework, just completely tailored to Breckenridge, but also very specifically developed for for a ski area. We have very specific needs with seasonal activities, fluctuations in visitors, a lot of mountain operational grooming enclosures and things that happen in the various zones that we've created as part of this this PK sign master plan. We have special events, weather, equipment and structure. Ultimately, you know, we're really trying to build on safety and promoting a good guest experience. And that really does come down to having a good signage plan that will help move people through the various base areas and to get to where they're going. We have so many different types of unique visitors that come to our community because it is very special. And so being able to present them with safe and effective ways, not only for them to get where they're going, but for the employees of the resorts to move things around in an effective manner that's going to work in direct people. We did, I'll just, I'm not going to do the whole presentation unless there are specific questions for us. I did want to point out that we did get some great questions from Planning Commission as part of that discussion because it it was on the consent calendar. They did pull it up and ask us questions. We talked about how there's no illumination being provided in any of the signs. We talked about the importance of legibility in any sign plan to ensure that you have a font size and in a text format that is going to be bold enough that people can quickly read the information and figure out where they're going. And lastly, we just talked about why is why are we only doing PK eight right now? And really ultimately, it's when we were setting up these zones, we know that these zones apply to peak seven and peak nine, but they not all of them apply to peak seven and peak nine. So we needed to start with the highest amount of activity hub. And so we think that we've been able to come up with a good framework, which now we hope to build upon with the other base areas with this as our guide. So that's really our intent. And I don't know if Jim wants to add anything.
I'm Mayor and Council, Jim Testan from Bell Resorts. Just want to echo what Elena said. Staff has been really great to work with on this. And, you know, my goal is is really to create consistency across our three base areas and our offsite entities within the town limits because I think, you know, from a design standpoint, that it also, you know, it has a level of consistency for our guests, but as well as looking for ways that we can be consistent with the the town sign code. You know, the the town has done a great job developing the the sign code. And and really what we're just trying to identify here is areas where, you know, as a ski area, we're a bit of a different business, you know, and so we're just, we're trying to work as best as we can in the existing code. But, you know, also identify those areas where variances are are requested as we've noted.
Thank you, Jim. Questions of either Jim or Elena?
I'm just curious about the timing, like, so obviously there are new signs that you're prepared to implement immediately. But then are you going to be rolling out the new signs over like a series of seasons or they'll all be there at the same time? How is that going to work?
Yeah, another goal of this this process for us is to create an internal system of checks and balances so that you get a new manager comes into ski and ride school and peak nine. They they feel like there's a need for a sign somewhere, so they're not reinventing the wheel. They're going back to this master sign plan. It is a standardized graphic and look and feel of that sign. And that's that's really the goal for the future rollout of this.
Okay, so you won't. So there won't be like a ton of signs that are just taken out. They'll be replaced like as needed.
I think that a good example is just like the lift terminal signage as in, you know, on on some of the chairs, we have the new format of signage.
Yeah.
The ones that have been upgraded more recently. And then on some of them, we still have the old red signs. The timeframe in which that'll all be rolled out isn't confirmed yet, but we know that that's the ultimate goal to create that consistency and brand recognition in the base. I mean, there are signs in here that we've permitted because they exist that are going to be going away with with future projects quickly, like the guest services building, things like that. So we know it will continue to evolve. I think one of the other great things that we've done through this process, thanks to Cliff, is figure out all the signs that have already been permitted and which ones haven't and started to create a library of that that is going to go in with this so that it's easier for staff to find what we've done in the past, you know, what were the reasons why it was approved and how can we approve a future sign?
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
Dick? Elena, I I know you guys have seen the papers. There's some angst about sandwich boards in town and that kind of thing. And and that was probably one of the reasons we called it up because we saw variants for sandwich boards, but we saw no detail. And that's one of the unfortunate pieces of the process. Now that we've seen detail and read it, I have just a couple of questions. Are you going to use any of those type signs, the the sandwich boards? Moveable, I understand the need for them in many instances. But will any of them be used for sales generating purposes or will they all be kind of operational safety, that kind of thing?
No, that is the the thing with these. They have to be oriented towards wayfinding, direction, safety. A lot of the ones that you'll see that you'll probably start to notice now that we've gone through this process. There are many when you're coming off of the gondola into the plaza because there are, it's a large volume of people trying to get many places at the same time. And many of those are like, please keep moving and the bus is down here. So they're not targeted towards advertising. And in fact, we were required to remove any of those requests from the plan as we move forward. So they're really about getting you to where you're supposed to go.
Great. Nice job, Cliff. Yeah, and you know, the reason I ask is just, you know, we need to be consistent. We're we're, you know, we kind of threw our sign code out the window with COVID and now we're trying you know, we kind of threw our sign code out the window with COVID and now we're trying to bring it back. And so consistency for town is, it's really important. It's hard on our staff to try to enforce this stuff if we're not consistent. One more question with the sandwich or the vinyl signs, are they only on the sandwich boards or are you using vinyl signs elsewhere?
There's, the, the sandwich boards are metal with a base and those are set up and it's a weighted base so that they're easy to move around, like if you're moving around the queue line. The vinyl is really limited to the, the feather flags and any of the banners that are occurring and moving about quite frequently, mainly in the snow front and on mountain zones. As you've seen, I'm sure many times, directing people up to ski school or different meetup points, the changing locations of the lift queuing, especially at Rocky Mountain and Colorado Super Chairs, those entering those lift lines can be pretty confusing if you've never been there and trying to identify that with some verticality. So it's really limited to that and getting people, again, the vinyl's not in that Arrival Plaza Food and Beverage Zone. It's really that on mountain. We can stick it in, move it, and get it around.
Okay, I was thinking of those as banners. So, okay.
Those banners are usually that vinyl fabric, just with tiny little perforations in order to make sure that they don't get, yeah, blow away.
What is the material of the actual sign on the sandwich boards?
Panel. So it's a metal panel.
Okay, they're all metal?
Metal.
I think that's it. Well, one question is, I mean, do we, maybe this is for Cliff. Do we feel like our, or the way I read it, that any, you know, fixed, affixed to the building signage, even if it's seasonal, you know, changed twice a year, that that has to follow our code to the T? Is that, is that accurate? Did I read that right? Okay, because I think that's probably important. You know, it's kind of apples to apples with the rest of town. And is there any way to to ensure some level of appropriateness and quality? And we're going to ask our own parking contractors as we go through the, the sandwich board. We're going to have a sandwich board work session here coming at some point. And it'll be the same discussion with our own parking contractors. But is there any way to ensure the, the quality of signage? I mean, I think everything I saw, I'm, I'm fine with so far. But I mean, just going forward, you know, just as you recognize, a new employee comes along and gets an idea or something, but that the quality of the movable sign, signage is, is up to standards or to set a standard?
Do you refer to the content or the material?
Some of both. They're just really the whole look and feel of it, you know, the, the graphic, the graphic design, the content.
The current graphic design, we had brand standards and the, and the package, if you saw those, so there were specific fonts, logo size requirements, things like that to help try to guide it. And like Jim said, his goal is to try to gain more consistency. And so by putting the brand standards within the document, we hope that that, that helps people with that, with that future. Fortunately, now Jim gets a lot of signage questions. It's his favorite. So I mean, I think that like when looking at any, when looking at any signage program, you want to think about hierarchy and like, what's the most important information? What's the purpose of that sign? Where are we trying to get people to go or do with this information? And so having that consistent pattern, you can see that with color, you can see that with font. But having a dark background with white font generally works very well. So the brand standards are set up nicely for that here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Any member of the public who wants to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application? Public hearing is closed. Is there any further evidence to be offered in this matter? Does any member of the council have any questions or desire any additional information from anyone who has spoken or who has presented information during this hearing? This call-up hearing in this matter is now closed. Town council discussion. Dick, you want to lead us off?
Sure. We got our questions answered. I'm comfortable with this now. I, I think I told Jim and Elena why we called it up and, and so, yeah, I'm good. I'm good too.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Oh, boy.
Just a motion.
I moved the town council approve application number P L two thousand twenty-two dash zero four three nine. And the town attorney written decision on the application presented to the town council tonight be adopted as the town council's final decision on the application.
Second. There's a motion and a second. And can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. The application is approved. Town count, the town attorney's written decision on the application presented to the town council tonight is adopted. The town council's final decision on the application. Record of this proceeding shall consist of, number one, pages two thousand and two to two thousand and fifty-nine inclusive, council's agenda package for this meeting, all documents admitted into evidence by the council, all documents offered into evidence at the hearing, but not admitted, if any. Copies of the applicable provisions of the Development Code and other applicable town ordinance is transcript of the public hearing and such other documents as may properly be included in the record. Is there anything further on this matter? That concludes this hearing. Thank you. And thank you, everyone. All right. With that, we go to other matters. Any of the council have any other matters? One other matter, Michael Bennett, one. It's a big deal.
Oh, good.
Yeah, very exciting. I'm Polish, but the Bennett one was a big deal. And it is early. All right. No other matters? Also scheduled meetings. See everybody on Thursday. Don't forget, Jeffrey. All right.
Like, go relax.